The Ferguson Florissant School District located in suburban St. Louis serves more than 10,000 students from preschool through 12th grade with an excellent comprehensive educational program. Fully accredited by the state of Missouri, the Ferguson Florissant School District operates seven pre-kindergarten through second grade schools, six intermediate schools, two sixth grade centers, three middle schools including a cutting-edge STEAM middle school which was ranked the number-two school in Missouri this year, two A-plus and NCA CASI accredited high schools, the Innovation High School, a big-picture learning school, and a STEAM high school focused on preparing students in fields including science, technology, and engineering. In August, U.S. News &amp; World reported STEAM Academy at McClure South Berkeley High School as one of the best high schools in America, placing the school in the top 12% of high schools in Missouri and in the top 35% of high schools nationally. As a district leading the charge in high school transformation, there are a lot of pathways to success. All of our high schools are Project Lead the Way schools. We offer many programs and opportunities such as dual enrollment, dual credit, international baccalaureate, AVID, and Elevate St. Louis. Our Redtail Cadet program has also secured private pilot's licenses for students before they even graduate. The number of FFSD students enrolled in advanced placement courses has also dramatically increased. The district has intentionally focused on college and career readiness and has increased the four-year graduation rate to 93%. Besides the secondary school coursework, the district ensured opportunities for each population of students in an effort to support the goal of college readiness. In addition, the district includes a nationally-recognized early education program, the award-winning Challenger Learning Center Space Education Facility, and the Little Creek Nature Area, a 97-acre nature preserve that offers experiential learning opportunities for students in science, biology, ecology, and related areas of study. Through our partnership with Varsity Tutors, all students and teachers will have access to live tutors on demand. The district has also transformed alternative education with the Restoration and Wellness Center. Recognizing that well-being is vital for academic success, the district prioritizes the health and social-emotional well-being of its students and staff. The district has a partnership with Hazel Health that offers comprehensive healthcare and teletherapy services, ensuring that students have access to medical care and mental health support during the school day. Additionally, Ferg Floor Care Health Clinic provides free healthcare services to district employees demonstrating the district's commitment to the well-being of its faculty and staff. The Board of Education has made equity a priority in the Ferguson Florissant School District. In 2018, the Board adopted an equity resolution, and between 2020 and 2022, the district examined inequities and racism in policies and practices culminating in the Board's adoption of the Ferguson Florissant School District's anti-racist standards for social justice in anti-racist schools. From early childhood education to advanced scientific exploration, from personalized learning opportunities to comprehensive healthcare services, the Ferguson Florissant School District continues to lead the way in providing an exceptional educational experience that truly is providing equity and access for all. The Ferguson Florissant School District located in suburban St. Louis serves more than 10,000 students from preschool through 12th grade with an excellent comprehensive educational program. Fully accredited by the state of Missouri, the Ferguson Florissant School District operates seven pre-kindergarten through second grade schools, six intermediate schools, two sixth grade centers, three middle schools including a cutting-edge STEAM middle school which was ranked the number-two school in Missouri this year, two A-plus and NCA CASI accredited high schools, the Innovation High School, a big-picture learning school, and a STEAM high school focused on preparing students in fields including science, technology, and engineering. In August, U.S. News &amp; World reported STEAM Academy at McClure South Berkeley High School as one of the best high schools in America, placing the school in the top 12% of high schools in Missouri and in the top 35% of high schools nationally. As a district leading the charge in high school transformation, there are a lot of pathways to success. All of our high schools are Project Lead the Way schools. We offer many programs and opportunities such as dual enrollment, dual credit, international baccalaureate, AVID, and Elevate St. Louis. Our Redtail Cadet program has also secured private pilot's licenses for students before they even graduate. The number of FFSD students enrolled in advanced placement courses has also dramatically increased. The district has intentionally focused on college and career readiness and has increased the four-year graduation rate to 93%. Besides the secondary school coursework, the district ensured opportunities for each population of students in an effort to support the goal of college readiness. In addition, the district includes a nationally-recognized early education program, the award-winning Challenger Learning Center Space Education Facility, and the Little Creek Nature Area, a 97-acre nature preserve that offers experiential learning opportunities for students in science, biology, ecology, and related areas of study. Through our partnership with Varsity Tutors, all students and teachers will have access to live tutors on demand. The district has also transformed alternative education with the Restoration and Wellness Center. Recognizing that well-being is vital for academic success, the district prioritizes the health and social-emotional well-being of its students and staff. The district has a partnership with Hazel Health that offers comprehensive healthcare and teletherapy services, ensuring that students have access to medical care and mental health support during the school day. Additionally, Ferg Floor Care Health Clinic provides free healthcare services to district employees demonstrating the district's commitment to the well-being of its faculty and staff. The Board of Education has made equity a priority in the Ferguson Florissant School District. In 2018, the Board adopted an equity resolution, and between 2020 and 2022, the district examined inequities and racism in policies and practices culminating in the Board's adoption of the Ferguson Florissant School District's anti-racist standards for social justice in anti-racist schools. From early childhood education to advanced scientific exploration, from personalized learning opportunities to comprehensive healthcare services, the Ferguson Florissant School District continues to lead the way in providing an exceptional educational experience that truly is providing equity and access for all. The Ferguson Florissant School District located in suburban St. Louis serves more than 10,000 students from preschool through 12th grade with an excellent comprehensive educational program. Fully accredited by the state of Missouri, the Ferguson Florissant School District operates seven pre-kindergarten through second grade schools, six intermediate schools, two sixth grade centers, three middle schools including a cutting-edge STEAM middle school which was ranked the number-two school in Missouri this year, two A-plus and NCA CASI accredited high schools, the Innovation High School, a big-picture learning school, and a STEAM high school focused on preparing students in fields including science, technology, and engineering. In August, U.S. News &amp; World reported STEAM Academy at McClure South Berkeley High School as one of the best high schools in America, placing the school in the top 12% of high schools in Missouri and in the top 35% of high schools nationally. As a district leading the charge in high school transformation, there are a lot of pathways to success. All of our high schools are Project Lead the Way schools. We offer many programs and opportunities such as dual enrollment, dual credit, international baccalaureate, AVID, and Elevate St. Louis. Our Redtail Cadet program has also secured private pilot's licenses for students before they even graduate. The number of FFSD students enrolled in advanced placement courses has also dramatically increased. The district has intentionally focused on college and career readiness and has increased the four-year graduation rate to 93%. Besides the secondary school coursework, the district ensured opportunities for each population of students in an effort to support the goal of college readiness. In addition, the district includes a nationally-recognized early education program, the award-winning Challenger Learning Center Space Education Facility, and the Little Creek Nature Area, a 97-acre nature preserve that offers experiential learning opportunities for students in science, biology, ecology, and related areas of study. Through our partnership with Varsity Tutors, all students and teachers will have access to live tutors on demand. The district has also transformed alternative education with the Restoration and Wellness Center. Recognizing that well-being is vital for academic success, the district prioritizes the health and social-emotional well-being of its students and staff. The district has a partnership with Hazel Health that offers comprehensive healthcare and teletherapy services, ensuring that students have access to medical care and mental health support during the school day. Additionally, Ferg Floor Care Health Clinic provides free healthcare services to district employees demonstrating the district's commitment to the well-being of its faculty and staff. The Board of Education has made equity a priority in the Ferguson Florissant School District. In 2018, the Board adopted an equity resolution, and between 2020 and 2022, the district examined inequities and racism in policies and practices culminating in the Board's adoption of the Ferguson Florissant School District's anti-racist standards for social justice in anti-racist schools. From early childhood education to advanced scientific exploration, from personalized learning opportunities to comprehensive healthcare services, the Ferguson Florissant School District continues to lead the way in providing an exceptional educational experience that truly is providing equity and access for all.
The Ferguson Florescent School District located in suburban St. Louis serves more than 10,000 students from preschool through 12th grade with an excellent comprehensive educational program. Fully accredited by the state of Missouri, the Ferguson Florescent School District operates seven pre-kindergarten through second grade schools, six intermediate schools, two sixth grade centers, three middle schools including a cutting-edge STEAM middle school which was ranked the number-two school in Missouri this year, two A-plus and NCA CASI accredited high schools, the Innovation High School, a big-picture learning school, and a STEAM high school focused on preparing students in fields including science, technology, and engineering. In August, U.S. News and World reported named STEAM Academy at McClure South Berkeley High School as one of the best high schools in America, placing the school in the top 12% of high schools in Missouri and in the top 35% of high schools nationally. As a district leading the charge in high school transformation, there are a lot of pathways to success. All of our high schools are Project Lead the Way schools. We offer many programs and opportunities such as dual enrollment, dual credit, international baccalaureate, AVID, and Elevate St. Louis. Our Redtail Cadet program has also secured private pilot's licenses for students before they even graduate. The number of FFSD students enrolled in advanced placement courses has also dramatically increased. The district has intentionally focused on college and career readiness and has increased the four-year graduation rate to 93%. Besides the secondary school coursework, the district ensured opportunities for each population of students in an effort to support the goal of college readiness. In addition, the district includes a nationally-recognized early education program, the award-winning Challenger Learning Center Space Education Facility, and the Little Creek Nature Area, a 97-acre nature preserve that offers experiential learning opportunities for students in science, biology, ecology, and related areas of study. Through our partnership with Varsity Tutors, all students and teachers will have access to live tutors on demand. The district has also transformed alternative education with the Restoration and Wellness Center. Recognizing that well-being is vital for academic success, the district prioritizes the health and social-emotional well-being of its students and staff. The district has a partnership with Hazel Health that offers comprehensive healthcare and teletherapy services, ensuring that students have access to medical care and mental health support during the school day. Additionally, Ferg Floor Care Health Clinic provides free healthcare services to district employees, demonstrating the district's commitment to the well-being of its faculty and staff. The Board of Education has made equity a priority in the Ferguson Florescent School District. In 2018, the Board adopted an equity resolution, and between 2020 and 2022, the district examined inequities and racism in policies and practices culminating in the Board's adoption of the Ferguson Florescent School District's anti-racist standards for social justice in anti-racist schools. From early childhood education to advanced scientific exploration, from personalized learning opportunities to comprehensive healthcare services, the Ferguson Florescent School District continues to lead the way in providing an exceptional educational experience that truly is providing equity and access for all. The Ferguson Florescent School District located in suburban St. Louis serves more than 10,000 students from preschool through 12th grade with an excellent comprehensive educational program. Fully accredited by the state of Missouri, the Ferguson Florescent School District operates seven pre-kindergarten through second grade schools, six intermediate schools, two sixth grade centers, three middle schools including a cutting-edge STEAM middle school which was ranked the number-two school in Missouri this year, two A-plus and NCA CASI accredited high schools, the Innovation High School, a big-picture learning school, and a STEAM high school focused on preparing students in fields including science, technology, and engineering. In August, U.S. News and World reported named STEAM Academy at McClure South Berkeley High School as one of the best high schools in America, placing the school in the top 12% of high schools in Missouri and in the top 35% of high schools nationally. As a district leading the charge in high school transformation, there are a lot of pathways to success. All of our high schools are Project Lead the Way schools. We offer many programs and opportunities such as dual enrollment, dual credit, international baccalaureate, AVID, and Elevate St. Louis. Our Redtail Cadet program has also secured private pilot's licenses for students before they even graduate. The number of FFSD students enrolled in advanced placement courses has also dramatically increased. The district has intentionally focused on college and career readiness and has increased the four-year graduation rate to 93%. Besides the secondary school coursework, the district ensured opportunities for each population of students in an effort to support the goal of college readiness. In addition, the district-
Evening. It is March 26, 2025. The time is now 6:34 PM. We truly do apologize about our delay and did not expect to keep you here extra time. We do appreciate you being here with us tonight. I want to remind the board members of our meeting norms and again call the meeting to order. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Want to remind the board members of our meeting norms and again call the meeting to order. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you again for joining us. Certainly appreciate your presence and feedback tonight. Under the provisions of the public law, the state of Missouri, the board by roll call vote will vote on an agenda that includes a time, date, place, and ton of agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and the agenda for the meeting was posted on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025 at the Administration Center, 8855 Dunn Road, Hazelwood, Missouri, online and sent to local newspapers. Is there motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Tyson.
Second.
Second by Paul Walker. All those in favor say, uh, roll call, please, sorry.
Um, Dr. Paul Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Graves?
Yeah.
Dr. Thurman? Secretary votes yes. Mr. Tyson?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
And Dr. Martin?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. We have, uh, public comments. Let me start with this part and then I'll talk about how we'll operate tonight for that. The board allocates this portion of the meeting allows stakeholders opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each meeting. The board president will read aloud any comments that were previously submitted. While all comments will be included in the board materials this evening, they may be found under the public comments. The board may limit the number of comments read aloud based on length or repetition. Prior to public comment period, in-person participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, topic to be addressed, and will be allowed three minutes to speak from the podium. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board or request to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and keeping the district policies 4054, 4059, and personnel law should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to the speakers during the comment, the board president may clarify remarks at the end of the comment section to correct any misstatement of facts. Public comments will be found on the meeting and agenda of the district website within 14 days of the meeting. Tonight, we have probably about 50 public comments. We've grouped together our online submissions and so due to repetition, we're going to summarize the different categories. There's four categories for online. Public speakers, if you're here tonight, will call you up to speak for your, for your piece. For the first category of, uh, AP layoffs and cuts, uh, I apologize if I say your name wrong. I'll try and say, uh, Sean, Shannon, Emily, Robert, John, Chloe, Savannah, Jeffrey, and Joseph. These are the ones regarding AP layoffs and cutoffs, talking about, uh, and the board will get a copy of all these to receive as well. The, and I know we received several emails as well about certain assistant principals getting cut, uh, as well as, uh, the decisions being made and how that will impact potentially class sizes as well as discipline and given the options. That it's obviously not due to the cause and clarity be greatly appreciated. There are other issues and concerns to be addressed. Uh, we have other grants as well. Um, I'm making sure, yes, these are all about the assistant principal one. Uh, out of 18 applicants, which ones are being selected as well as how are board members, uh, how are the people getting selected for the AP layoffs and cuts? The next category is yonder bags. I'm sorry, that was not AP and cuts. Uh, I'll get back to that one in a second. Those ones must be other ones. AP and cuts, I apologize. Uh, writing asks the board to reconsider the AP cuts and layoffs. It's confusing that stakeholder input from the Google form and a gallery walk prior to last board meeting while the same time laying off 20 assistant principals without input from teachers or principals. Although it makes decisions more time consuming, it's important the strongest, most qualified people are kept as APs in order to have competent leadership. I'm just kind of summarizing all of them. A lot of them are around the idea of, uh, who gets to be picked, uh, to be an assistant principal who's getting identified as getting rifted, uh, is based on seniority rather than effectiveness. And a lot of people shared about various assistant principals and how they are effective, more effective than other ones is what they were sharing in terms of that and despite the various challenges, uh, as well as just leadership in general. And how some of the assistant principals have made strong connections and leadership and they would like to see them saved in the district. This one is about orchestra and fine arts. This was our largest one submitted. Uh, there are Amy, Geneva, Zion, Dominica, Jatari, Jamala, Michaela, Kyra, Jordan, Brooke, Alexandra, James, Miranda, Miranda, Rosalyn, Tidrick, Kamala, Michelle, Nicole, Tammy, Charles, Sabrina, Denise, Lisa, and Julie. Thank you for submitting your feedback. Uh, in summary, it is about the, um, program of orchestra and rumors of cutting the secondary orchestra program, uh, which we'll learn tonight. It's not cutting the secondary program, uh, overall, and that's about how it's impacted them and the fine arts programs impacted them and music is important to the schools as well as kids' development and how it's impacted them as a student overall. And about the rumors of seven through 12 secondary orchestra programs getting cut. I'm just making sure as I'm reading through these to make sure that none of them said. I know one person said they were going to come speak tonight as well, which I believe was Miranda. Fine arts programs and how limiting the programs, the secondary level and how some people are the teachers and have had a privilege teaching, uh, at those levels as well. Next one's about yonder pouches. Uh, Laurlyn, Patricia, and Elizabeth should strongly consider keeping yonder pouches, uh, as part of the maintenance. Keep them in the 17th years. This is the most difficult changes. Pouches have made it very effective, uh, at keeping classrooms engaged, to be aggressive in the budget. Uh, they have the opportunity to teach at the start and after yonder bags, recent year, I felt the first time in quite a while. How I felt using, uh, I felt used as a teacher before phones controlled our students every day. They felt more needed, respected, and efficient. Students were paying more attention in the classrooms and don't take away this resource from the teachers and students. Those are all from McClure Burke South Berkeley. Uh, exciting news from, uh, Halls Ferry. This is not one that's related. This is a one-off one that Dr. P. Walker went through. So we have some exciting news to share. We've just heard from the Innovative Technology Education Fund. Halls Ferry was awarded the Innovator Grant. The Falcon Steam Lab will soon become a reality. Out of 18 applicants, Halls Ferry is one of five selected. We wanted to announce this during the board meeting tonight. Very exciting. So thank you for, uh, Ms. Beg, the Dr. Beg, the librarian at Halls Ferry and the great work, uh, we look forward to seeing the grant. So kudos to Halls Ferry and getting the Innovative Technology Education Grant. Did I miss any? Dr. P. Walker in the, okay. We're going to call you up to, uh, some people just want a response. And so if you just want a response, we'll have someone follow up with you on that piece of it. First up is Charles about the sensory based, seniority-based firing. I apologize. Charles Peterson. Sorry.
To be the first group of people to reinvent the wheel over and over and over again. We are not looking at what has been done before. St. Louis Public Schools is $35 million in a deficit and they're not doing any layoffs. How is that possible? How are they doing that? Why are we not looking at what has been done before? I'm sorry that I'm angry, but I'm frustrated and I wish that I wasn't here. I wanted to be doing grading and writing lesson plans for tomorrow and I'm running out of time. But the problems with the budget are bigger than just the seniority-based hiring. Um, and I couldn't not say that. I had to be here. Next. I, uh, have the feeling that I keep hearing stories of principals that are hearing from their staff that their staff has been fired. That is so backwards. How can the principal be hearing it from the staff? The principal should be the one with the authority to be making decisions like that. You cannot delegate responsibility for the school without delegating authority. It doesn't make sense. You cannot delegate responsibility without delegating authority. You're making all the decisions unilaterally from a top-down, um, and it's not, sorry, that's why I said I wanted to go last. I'm sorry, I was literally, I, uh, mere seniority is not enough. I got a couple of things. Um, we might be thinking like, how is history going to remember this? How is history going to respond to how we do, to what we do in this moment? History will not remember Ferguson if we continue to cut the knees out beneath its most dedicated educators. I'm sitting next to someone who's been teaching in this district for 20 years and she was fired and her own boss didn't know about it. That doesn't make any sense. Make it make sense, please. We have to vote no on this budget. I want clarity. I came here wanting clarity that this was done and that I would feel a sense of leadership and that I could know like, okay, cool. I know what's going to happen next year. I'm not going to look for a different job because I'm not like worried about the state of my future school. If you were my student, I would call out your body language, Kevin. I just, I know, I'm sorry. I, sorry. Just the way that those comments were summarized was really not satisfying to me. Um, I'm not going to lie. Uh, I have 19 seconds left. That doesn't make any sense. Imagine what this meeting would look like if each of you only had three minutes to speak. These are the people that are doing the work. Do not delegate responsibility to them without also giving them authority. Go to a rehire process. Go to whatever empowers the principals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. I believe Shannon, STEAM Middle Traditional Schools and Equity. Dr. Haywood will follow up with you.
Oh, I didn't know I was starting and you started my timer. Oh, okay. Let's get it. All right. I'm ready now. Good after, uh, good evening. Hi, I'm Shannon Hazlett. I'm a parent in the district and I have been for the last 11 years. I'm here because, um, one of the things is about the STEAM middle school application process. I emailed a couple of months ago. I didn't get a response from anyone. And we were told that, uh, a large amount of the students were rejected due to not scoring proficient or advanced on test. And we were told that there were other options available for those students who don't score proficient or advanced, but STEAM Academy would be a good fit for them. The other problem about that is, is that we heard that STEAM Middle was accepting applications from students who live in the district that had been in private school all this time. Where is the equity and inclusion and loyalty to those who have sent their kids here to this school from K through fifth grade? How is that equitable? How is that right? How is that fair? What are we doing? The other thing is, is about that these, um, with traditional schools versus our STEAM schools, it seems like it's, it's weighing heavy, especially as we look at this budget. That's, the deficit is the $7 million plus dollars. I mean, the money didn't leave overnight, so we know that things can't really change effectively and efficiently overnight, but what is going to be done? What is the actual plan? We've received surveys, but what is the follow-up after these surveys to say, which part are we starting first? Does it matter? If you want your community in and you want people back, there has to be a reason of getting them back. I went on, uh, to, to visit in Alabama and they were having large growth of building homes and how they were marketing is this is this school district. We are this, we are that, to get families to come back, to get businesses there. We don't see that around here. We have a deficit of children reading at grade level at 75%. What are we putting in? You have to take some money out, but what are you going to leave in to, uh, to safely say that we're going to support our, our teachers? When we have teachers doing hybrid classes that do not interact with students, how are you really seeing growth? And how is that effective? And it's more at the traditional schools? I don't hear about that at the STEAM schools because they have staffing and they're not dealing with as much behaviors as you're dealing with and, and don't get me wrong, because my child is one of them behaviors sometimes. So at, at traditional schools, how are we helping? How are we being effective? How are we moving forward? How do you secure parents to say, hey, we're scared too. We're trying to figure out what's going to be in the best interest of our children. But we know that everything that they have to get, they need a teacher for. Where are the teaching staff coming from? If we keep cutting people, if we cut them all, what are we doing? We just want to know a clear, effective plan of what's happening and about STEAM, how is that equitable that we're taking people from the outside that's been what you riding on the inside all this time? That's it.
Thank you. Dr. Crawford will be following up. Next up, uh, will be about an assistant principal, I believe, Ramon Brown. Ramon Brown. Oh, he marked that he wanted to speak. Got it. Thank you. Uh, next, this one doesn't have a name on it. Uh, Bobby Small? Is that correct? Okay. Uh, speaking about public comments and no one gets back to you.
And that was mainly it. Public comments. I spoke last, two weeks ago and no one has gotten back with the seven questions I asked about, but I do have one other thing. Less Talk. How much money is being put into Less Talk and is it effective for their overall because it just started this school year?
Thank you. Do you remember who was supposed to follow back up with you? Just, uh? Got it. Yes. I know the board part I didn't email back about. Dr. P. Walker will follow back up with you. Uh, Rachel Davis, Staff Retention.
Good evening. Um, first I want to say I'm nervous, so you guys bear with me. So I'm just going to get right into it. Ms. Seuss from McClure North, as someone who has witnessed her exceptional work firsthand, I feel compelled to advocate for her and her continued presence at our school. Ms. Seuss has consistently proven herself to be an individual resource and an advocate for our students. She is genuinely there for the children and always ready to provide guidance, support, and encouragement when it is needed the most. During her time as acting principal, she demonstrated remarkable leadership abilities and genuine commitment to educational excellence. The potential decision to let go value members of our school, school community, Ms. Seuss, Mr. Dickerson, and Ms. Dolphus, these individuals are not just staff. They are pillars to our district who contribute immensely to our students' growth, educational, overall experience. Sorry, I'm super nervous. Instead of removing essential team members, let's explore solutions like maybe raising the price tickets to the game. I'm sorry, I asked, I completely forgot to ask. All of these young men that go to McClure North and Cross Keys are here to represent these three individuals I'm speaking about. I could have brought more, but my choir can only hold so many. But, um, um, so, uh, so one of the solutions, I was thinking we could raise prices to the tickets to the game, maybe have dress down days, charge fees for that, have more events for the school, um, to raise money. The money didn't, this didn't, the debt just didn't happen overnight. So getting out of debt is not going to happen in one day. So, um, I would just like you guys to please reconsider of letting go these three valuable staff members, um, who mean so much to the FERC floor community. And did I, did I mention Mr. Dickerson and Mr., Ms., Ms., okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But that's all I have to say. And I hope you guys reconsider those three because they are a pillar. They are, they mean so much to these kids. They, they care about them. They love them. They support them. They go above and beyond for these kids. And letting them go will be devastating to the FERC floor community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell will follow up with you. Katie Powers is next about program cuts.
Hi all. I'm Katie Powers. I've been working in the district for eight years now. I work at Cross Keys Middle School. And first of all, I just wanted to say thank you. I brought a comment to the board two weeks ago for our TSA funding and that was all approved and we've been able to go. But that's a separate issue. So I'm also deeply concerned about the AP cuts that have been put in place for our schools. I saw in your projected suggestion that you wanted to go down to two principals for Cross Keys Middle School. I mean, I've worked there for eight years. I, I literally cannot imagine going down to two principals. I think it would be absolutely detrimental for our student body and the culture of our school in general. We need more leaders in this school, not out of the school, honestly. We, when the teachers brought up to cut admin, I don't think that they were talking about the building admin. the building admin. We're talking about upper admin. And I'm really happy that Ms. Dolphus's name has already been brought up because I wanted to come and talk about her as well. She is an AP at Cross Keys Middle School. She is one of the best principals I've ever had. She is consistent, she walks the talk for restorative justice, she's forgiving with students, she has high expectations for students and teachers alike, and I've really grown under her leadership. And I think it would be a huge mistake to cut her. But please do not stop at her. You need to look deeply at all of the quick cuts that have been made based on tenure, essentially. Um, let's see. Also, the cuts for orchestra would be extremely detrimental. Um, it fosters a sense of belonging. Students need these electives. Um, it's a grow, it's growing in our district despite what has been reported. But yeah, we need to, that's about it. Honestly, oh, sorry, we have 45 seconds left. I think I can handle this. Okay. So I also saw in your projection that orchestra in general costs about $450,000. That was the proposed cut that we would save, about $450,000. So I thought it was interesting that the superintendent's payment, their salary, is about $260,000. That's over half of what it costs for the entire orchestra department. And has the impact been the same? I don't know. I think that that is also, that could be an area that we think about cutting as well. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Haywood will follow up. Kiana Brown, Keeping Our Staff.
Hi, my name is Kiana Brown. I've been in Ferguson Florissant for over 15 years. I have five children, four sons and a daughter, if it wasn't. And I want to add that Duchesne Elementary School is the best school in Ferguson Florissant School District. Oh, okay. All right. And I just want to say the foundation for my children came from the preschool program here. It came from Duchesne Elementary with teachers like Mr. Joyce, with teachers and, uh, like Ms. Passion, Ms. House, Ms. Adderbury, Ms. Lydicam, Ms. Tyler, Ms. Tiffany Blackman, Ms. Moynes, Ms., uh, Mr. Garvey, Mr. Hunter that's at Cross Keys, Mr. Casey. I have sent all five of my children through this system and then it starts to fail them. So I took my two youngest ones out and I put them in private school. Then I brought them back in and my youngest son graduates this year, but it's because of Dr. Harris, Alyssa Harris, it's because of Principal Harold, it's because of Principal, um, I can't think of his name off the top of my head, he's at Cross Keys. You guys can't fire these principals. Who's going to stop the fights? You guys can't get rid of these teachers. The principals would be overworked. They are already overwhelmed. I've witnessed it. Last year, you guys dropped the ball when it came to my daughter. My daughter was bullied by one of your staff members and nothing was done. If it wasn't for your security director and Dr. Govan, who heard me, if it wasn't for them, my daughter's record would be horrible, awful of a lie. Then this person questioning my daughter's sexuality to me and her dad. It's a lot of things that goes on in the background that you guys are not addressing and these teachers that's coming in that's faithful, y'all not do, y'all not listening. Nobody should be cut. You guys say no student left behind, no staff left behind. That goes for the teachers, the principals, the assistant principals, the janitors, the secretaries, the counselors, they are all a big family. When I went to Duchesne Elementary, it wasn't just the teachers, it wasn't just the principals, it was the cafeteria work. We knew everybody. Y'all don't shut the parents out, we can't even come in. If we try to come in, you have parents out here who wants to work. I'm one of them. I have a son, my oldest is 25, he graduated from here and it was the foundation. You have Dr. Katie, Katie Sanders, who was their principal. You, they were, they're like their parents. These principals and these assistant principals bring a lot to the table. And y'all, please, I am begging you, do not get rid of the assistant principals. We already struggling and give Berkeley back their high school.
Uh, Dr. Mitchell, or Mr. Mitchell and Dr. P. Walker, one of them will follow up with you. Uh, Calvin Davis, Staff Retention and Impact, and that will also be followed up by Mr. Mitchell
To the board, I thank you for this opportunity to speak. To all of you all who are visiting, I want to be naive for just a moment and believe that the remarks that are being made before you all are genuinely being heard and genuinely being, um, taken as something of truth. Because there's a lot of feelings that are wrapped up in what you all are deciding to do that ultimately impacts this room and those students that are standing right there. Let me just say, if, if the intent is to have students in a seat, if the intent is to have the schools open, if the intent is just to have the facade of education, then you all are going down the right path. But if the intent is to make an impact on the lives of individuals like that, those young men and that young lady, my son and daughter collected in that gathering of young folks who have a fragile future in this country if we don't do everything we are supposed to do in this moment and time in their life. Here's the thing that I don't understand. Budgets come and go. Households have to do it, companies have to do it, can't get away from it. But value is not quantified in what is cut. Value is quantified in what is curated. And what we are finding here is that the value of a curated Dr. Seuss, Mr. Dickerson, and Ms. Dolph are not being curated in the lives that they have impacted over the years of individuals like that. I don't want them to just go to school. I want them to be educated and empowered to live as successful and prosperous and productive citizens in this world. And we know that the area we live in has many challenges and all we have is a portion of time and impact that we can have to insulate and encourage them individuals to do that. And how are they getting that? They're getting that primarily through who I know is Dr. Seuss. If you cut Dr. Seuss from staff, you've done a great job with a budget, but you have done an absolutely disservice to the lives of individuals who have graduated and will graduate from McClure North. And so I encourage you to rethink it, to re-curate what the value is and what you all are trying to do as a board, because that's what you're entrusted to do. Everybody can't make the decisions for you, but what we can do is say, the decisions you make don't just stop at the desk that it's made from, but it does go in the front doors of those who have to deal with the impact of what you decide. And I hope that you all rethink and reconfigure and re-curate the value that Dr. Seuss has, Ms. Dickerson, Mr. Dickerson has, and Ms. Dolph has to the school and to the, to the students at McClure North and throughout. Thank you.
Next up is Monica, Cost Savings Recommendations, item number seven.
Good evening. Hi, um, my name is Monica Benokan and I'm writing to you this evening in support of our music education programs, particularly third through sixth grade. I am privileged to be the teacher of 106 orchestra students at Lee Hamilton and Griffith and I'm a product of Ferguson Florissant Music Education Program. I attended Cross Keys Middle School and McClure North, um, was a member of the orchestra throughout my time there. I'm saddened and appalled to hear there is a proposal to cut elementary band and orchestra programs in our district. The benefits of music education greatly outweigh the costs. Elementary instrumental music education is a cornerstone of a well-rounded curriculum, offering benefits that extend far beyond the music room. Research consistently demonstrates that learning an instrument enhances cognitive abilities, including memory, attention span, and problem-solving skills. Music education has been linked to improved academic performance, with studies showing a correlation between musical trait, musical training and higher scores on standardized tests, particularly in math and reading. Beyond academics, instrumental music fosters crucial social and emotional development. Participating in ensembles teaches teamwork, cooperation, and communication skills. Students learn to listen to and support one another. Music provides an outlet for self-expression and emotional release, contributing to improved mental well-being and reduced stress. Students are, learn perseverance, performance skills, teamwork, and how to set goals. They learn that it's okay to make mistakes and that everybody needs to work together to make music. And I teach the little ones, so they really have to work hard to make some music. And it brings our students to school. A few weeks ago, I told a fifth grade student at Griffith that I wouldn't be at school the next day. I had to go to the dentist or something like that. He looked at me and he said he's going to stay home because we weren't going to have orchestra class. I urge you, find another way to make up this deficit. Keep our music programs intact and keep the education of our students moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. P. Walker and Mr. Mitchell will follow up. Heather, uh, item six and seven, and the budget crisis in general, art, music, and strings in particular, harder to tell if it's more appropriate here or elsewhere, so.
Hello, my name is Heather Gudding. I have two children in the district and one who graduated in 2024 and is currently at Wash U. So coming after a music teacher, there's not a lot that I can add. We should absolutely not cut the strings for any grade level. Music is so important. There is data to support it. I sent an email that arrived at 12:02, has a lot of links for you guys. But one of the things I want to get into is that we keep talking about data and not about students. Our students are not just data points. It is scandalous that very few people sitting in this room have been to a school and talked to the children. I'm also a guest teacher in the district and I can tell you, in the middle school and the high school, those kids feel like you don't care. They know their building level staff cares. They feel like you don't care. Additionally, I was there when a staff member got a mass email that her job was ending at the end of the fiscal year. Her building principal didn't know and she got a mass email. Is this Doge? And your budget obfuscations, your, oh, we're saving so much at upper admin. I have done some of my research. First of all, most of the people sitting at that table should take a five-figure pay cut. You don't get us into this situation and keep your job and keep your pay, which by the way, even though a five-figure pay cut is more than most of your teachers make. You don't get to sit there at that table and then on top of that, oh, we cut this position. No, you didn't. You renamed it so that that person didn't have to take a pay cut. You went from coordinator to manager. See, I ask my children to do their homework and I do mine. I am furious. I'm furious that you're asking for all of this. I am furious that you are asking our children to sacrifice. I'm furious that you're asking our teachers to sacrifice. And this isn't just $7 million because we were supposed to have a $2 million surplus. This is $9 million. This is a mistake the people at these two tables made, a $9 million mistake. And we're supposed to trust you guys to fix it? I just, I am, I am beside myself that your solutions are things that will actually harm your precious data points. Your data points, your test scores are going to go down if you cut music. That is shown over and over again in the data and it's bad for their social, emotional health as well. We know that. That's also in data. There are NIH studies, there are American Psychological Association studies, I can give them all to you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell will follow up with you. Tyler Moore, Budget Cuts, Funding Issues As Pertaining To The Retention Of All Music
Good evening. My name is Tyler Moore. I am a teacher in the Ferguson Florissant School District. I have been here for 13 years. I have taught at McClure High School, Ferguson Middle School, McClure South Berkeley, STEAM Middle. And, uh, over my time, I can say confidently that I am a product of this district. It's made me the teacher who I am today. And I have to speak to you today in advocacy of music education. It is something that is often considered to be on the chopping block. We consider, um, in the X's and O's and in the decimals and all of these data points, like Ms. Gudding said, um, this is often something we consider first to cut. There is such a wide body of research that states students who participate in music programs and fine arts programs in general excel and do better than students who do not. There is a clear connection. I don't want us to ignore educational research whenever we know what works. We know that these classes do help our kids. So Board of Directors and friends in this room, I encourage you to consider the importance of your music education programs and the value that they provide to our students. If our goals are to improve attendance, to work on reading comprehension and mathematics, music education serves each one of those needs tenfold. If anything, we should be doubling down. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Dr. P. Walker will follow up. Next up is Miranda Bell, Elimination Of Elementary Strings Program.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Miranda Bell and I am an elementary orchestra teacher at Combs and Robinwood. I get to serve about 110 students between both buildings right now. To the board and to the teachers, staff, and the administrators of the Ferguson Florissant School District, I was talking recently with some college students from the University of Western Cape in South Africa, and I learned that students in the township schools serving marginalized students in Cape Town, South Africa seldom have access to music classes, much less instrumental music classes like band and orchestra. Those who do have access to music are from families who can afford private lessons or the limited amounts of students who can participate in grant-funded opportunities. It brought me to tears because I could not imagine a world without music. I say all this to say that after all this district has survived through and all you have fought for in terms of equity, we cannot afford to create a world without equity and access to music. Every student deserves access and it is with this philosophy that I have worked to provide access to string music instruction for every student in my buildings who desires to learn. I have secured grant funding, I've recruited donors, I have searched in the nooks and crannies of buildings throughout this district to make sure I can put an instrument in the hand of any student, regardless of special needs, behavior challenges, academic, financial barriers, any student who wants to learn to play. It has been my immense privilege to help build the string music programs at Combs and Robinwoods. In the board report outlining the cost-cutting measures that was leaked last night, it proposes the elimination of the string programs in elementary and that one rationale for this was disruption to general music instruction. I want to address this and argue that what we do in instrumental music is not a disruption, but it's an enrichment and there is rigor that goes far beyond what students can receive in general music classes. As we face these budget shortfalls that have wreaked havoc on the district's definition of normal, I would like to say thank you specifically to Mr. Joyce down there and to Derek Bridges for their investment to me and into the program that I have worked to build over the last two years. I am saddened that this season may have to come to an end, not by, by, by my own volition, but because of the financial mismanagement that has wreaked havoc on an already overburdened teaching staff. Regardless, I want you to know this, with everything that I know right now, if given the chance, I would choose this opportunity over and over and over again. That's how much I love it. I also want to say thank you to the families and the little people that I have had the privilege to teach. I have enjoyed every minute. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. P. Walker will follow up. Amy, number seven, cost savings measures.
Hello. Hello. Hold on, just a second. Okay, hi. My name is Amy Trippity. I'm going to be reading my own statement, and if there is time, the statement of one of my colleagues from Cross Keys Middle, Alexia Loy, who is a phenomenal teacher. My name is Amy Trippity. I have had the pleasure of serving as the orchestra director at Berkeley Intermediate School and Halls Ferry Intermediate School for the 2024-2025 school year. I have the following to say about the proposed cost-saving recommendations. Pull-out music programs are set to be cut due to alleged low enrollment, alleged disruption to general music education, and alleged resource inefficiency. Respectfully, I would like to address these claims. For starters, elementary instrumental music teachers do a lot more than simply teach instrumental music, as valuable as that is. I do 220 minutes of lunch duty per week. I'm also one of the first people to be pulled to cover another teacher's class due to the sub-s shortage, and it doesn't cost the district a dime because I'm on salary. In addition to teaching music, we also serve as critical building support. We're additional adult bodies, you know? We care about the students, we build special relationships with the students, and we're there. Instrumental music actually helps the other specialists in the building. When we pull students from other classrooms, that makes class sizes smaller and more manageable for those other specialists. And we all know that smaller class sizes mean fewer instances of disruptive behaviors and fewer referrals. We add to school culture in an enormously positive way as well. Students who tend to act out in their general education classrooms often benefit from having an outlet where they can use their voices in a productive manner. In my summit of evaluation this year, my supervisor even specifically wrote that he was impressed by how students with disciplinary issues are well-behaved in my classroom. Instrumental music provides critical social and emotional learning development opportunities. I have personally seen students become better at cooperating with people who are not their friends, develop confidence, and discover an opportunity to have a positive learning experience for the first time. All year, students find a place to belong in the orchestra classroom. I firmly believe that students who are engaged in the performing arts are far, far less to engage in self-destructive and harmful behaviors elsewhere. As for low enrollment, I have 140 students in my two buildings. About half of those students are in third grade, meaning, and this is my first year, so, meaning that my program will continue to grow every year that I teach. Currently, at Berkeley, nearly 20% of the student population at Berkeley isn't currently enrolled in orchestra. I'm so sorry. As for the cost of my program, I was able to raise significant funding this year through instrument rental fees. I raised nearly $1,000 at Halls Ferry alone. That almost makes that part of my program self-sufficient. We have much, much more value than simply putting on concerts and teaching students how to play instruments. With respect, whoever made the decision to cut our program simply did not take into consideration the full scope of what we bring to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell will follow up. Next up is Robert Flick, possible program cut.
Hello. My name is Robert Flick. I'm a junior at McClure North High School. I am an IB student, but most importantly for this, I am a cellist in the McClure North Orchestra. It is saddened me and my teachers and everyone else in our orchestra that we were informed during the middle of class that the school board is considering a proposal to eliminate secondary orchestra programs across the district. This decision would deprive our children of invaluable educational and artistic opportunities. Music education is not just an extracurricular activity. It is a critical component of well-rounded education. Numerous studies have shown that participation in orchestra and other music programs enhances cognitive development, improves academic performance, fosters discipline, and strengthens teamwork and leadership skills. For many students, orchestra is more than just a class. It is a source of motivation, a creative outlet, and a place where they learn to work together and find belonging. If these programs are cut, our students will lose access to high-quality music education, limiting their ability to pursue college scholarships, professional careers in music, and the lifelong joy of playing an instrument. Additionally, eliminating orchestra could negatively impact the overall reputation of our school district, making it less attractive to families who value the arts. And I just want to leave on this last thing of all the things that I've been able to do, because we have a school orchestra, which requires a school orchestra, and have been severely, which have been greatly helped by the school orchestra and having Mr. Clements, our orchestra teacher, to guide me. All suburban district festivals, all state orchestra, solo ensemble festivals, state and district level, Des Lee Fine Arts Festival, concerto competitions throughout the St. Louis area, and some string camps all require you to be in a school orchestra. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell will follow up with you. Next up is John Flick, proposed budget.
My name is John Flick, and I would just like to remind the board that several of you have said that you would make cuts that are furthest away from students. And when it comes to some of the things that they've been talking about, particularly with orchestra and strings and things like that, I do not consider those type of cuts to be the furthest away from students, at least according to my definition. I'd also like to comment on the preliminary budget. The projected ending unrestricted fund balance is actually correctly reported at 11.29%. All budgets should disclose this number, I believe, because it accurately reflects the financial position of the district's operating budget. You do not get that when you present a percentage based on total funds. Financial reports need to be consistent, and that has been a problem, and they should focus on unrestricted funds, because that's what you operate out of. If reported using unrestricted funds, the 2024-25 percentage, which was reported at 11.7% in February, should have been 8.2. We would be moving in the right direction to 11.3 by this budget as it currently stands. But I am also concerned, because I look at the budget and the things that we're cutting, and I'm saying, we didn't have a problem five years ago with funding some of these programs that we're looking at cutting now. Why are we cutting off the arms and legs of some of these programs that have been around and we've been able to sustain? The issue that we have is one that has been perpetuated over a period of approximately four years, and it has gone without proper oversight and guidance in those particular areas. I do not believe that we can correct this problem in a one- or two-year period, and we need to do it in small increments. One of the big problems that I see that we have is our capital spending and where we're getting the funds from. Starting, and I believe it was 2021, the district started designating about 4.25% of their levy money to go towards capital projects. On top of that, drawing money even in this current budget out of general operations. If you look at other school districts such as Hazelwood, number one, no tax levying money goes towards capital projects. Number two, no money comes out of general operations. We have squandered money in capital areas for the sake of our children and our teachers, and there needs to be an end to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Singleton will follow up with you.
Good evening, board. Thank you for opening up this forum for public comments today. I'm here to advocate for my colleagues at McClure. My colleagues are incredible people. I'm an assistant principal at McClure, and the other assistant principals not only know all their students' names, but they know their middle names. They know their families, they know their neighborhoods, they know their jobs, they know what their passions are, and their commitment to the students does make a difference. And I'm gonna go as far as to say that they save lives. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell will follow up with you. Last up is Veronica, cutting of strings program.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Veronica Smothersen, a parent of two students in the district, and a little one is a part of Parents as Teachers program. And I also work in the district as a Pinocchio associate, and I've done it for the past nine years. My daughter is a fourth grader and a second-year string student under the direction of her orchestra teacher, Ms. Bell. As I am proud of Kylie for her academic accomplishments, I'm equally impressed by her willingness to task herself in committing to learning to play the viola. Ms. Bell has introduced a level of professionalism to her students through clear and written contracts for both parents and students to assure cooperation and support to upholding the responsibility of creating future musicians through a collective effort of parent, teacher, and student engagement. Within the last two years, my daughter has had the opportunity to have her first solo, attend field trips, providing her with exposure to music history and culture beyond the classroom, and most importantly, she's had the opportunity to perform with a grade higher than her, which serves as a reminder that she can accomplish anything she puts her mind to. I recently asked my baby, did she plan on continuing to play the viola for fifth grade? And immediately was met with a yes, as if my question was rhetorical. I had no idea me asking her that recently could be a negative forecast of a potential that the district will be taking away that opportunity for her to grow as a string student due to the lack of financial responsibility on the district's behalf. Mishandling of funds should not take away an opportunity for our students to receive supplemental and necessary creative outlets. I feel that the district's attempt to save money through cutting something such as strings shows that the same outdated approach of going after fine arts as the first on the chopping block has proven to do nothing but take away limited resources that we already have. Can I provide private string lessons? With sacrifice, yes. Should I have to outsource and finance for an opportunity initially provided voluntarily through the district because of the mishandling of funds on the district's behalf? No. Cutting orchestra might be saving the district money, but keep in mind, you're losing and wasting potential student talent. You're potentially taking away a scholarship opportunity and continued growth and personal development. You remove these programs and replace them with what? Nothing. This is counterproductive to the positive growth of the district. Thank you.
Dr. P. Walker will follow up. So, I want to thank everyone who submitted the comments. The board takes all of these seriously, and many things go through our minds as we're hearing comments, as we're making decisions tonight. Again, we get a learn, mention of this information when you all do as well. There's no other meetings with this, and so, we appreciate you taking the time and all the emails. We do read them, even if our responses sometimes are generic in nature. We are reading them, and we are just letting you know we have read them. So, appreciate everyone taking the time to do that as we do this difficult work tonight. Our student representatives on a college tour tonight and not here. FFNEA is Dana, are you speaking, or someone else? Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Good evening, Board of Education members, co-supraintendents Dr. Walker and Mr. Mitchell, FFNEA members, Ferguson Florissant family and community members. After relaxing spring break, we are back to providing the students of the Ferguson Florissant School District with the best education from the best professional staff. Today, we completed the 123rd day of school. You may wonder why the FFNEA states how many days we have been in school and why this simple statistical task holds such a huge significance with our members. This evening, I would like to take a moment to explain the importance of tracking our academic days, not just as a marker of time, but as a reflection of our shared commitment to education and our students' growth. First and foremost, the countdown of school days is a critical reminder of the time we have dedicated to our students. Each day represents a unique opportunity for learning, growth, and connection. The value of the education we provide cannot be overstated. The tally of school days is more than a number. It is a testament to our wavering dedication to fostering an environment where students can thrive. Additionally, tracking the number of school days helps us maintain a focus on accountability. As educators, we are entrusted with ensuring that every moment in the classroom counts, from taking daily attendance, classroom instruction, multitasking, encountering unexpected disruptions, professional developments, PLCs, IEPs, staff meetings, lesson planning, curriculum deep dives, district-level committees, classroom observations, and parental contacts. By keeping close tabs on our school days, we can continually assess our academic calendar, ensuring we maximize our time to deliver the best possible education. This transparency helps us identify areas where we can improve, adapt our strategies, and ultimately enhance the learning experience for our students. Lastly, let us not forget the significance of this countdown in preparing our students for the future. School is not just about the academic content, but also about teaching our students the value of time management, perseverance, and commitment to their goals. By emphasizing the number of school days, we instill in our students the importance of valuing each day, each lesson, and each opportunity to learn. In closing, the administration and FFNEA will meet tomorrow to continue negotiations. There are still a few proposals left on the table, as well as salary. The FFNEA professional negotiations team is optimistic that the administration team will reflect on this collective journey and the continued commitment to excellence in education that certified and support staff have demonstrated. With our collaborative efforts of negotiating in good faith, the days we have spent together this school year will be more than just a statistic. They will reflect our commitment to excellence in education. Together, let us continue to inspire, challenge, and support our students, ensuring that every day counts in this educational journey. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Next up is item number five, disbursements.
Good evening to the Ferguson Florissant School District, Board of Education, colleagues and community. Tonight, I will present the disbursements report for March 26, 2025. As always, we read the mission and vision statement. The mission of the Ferguson Florissant School District is to provide high-quality instruction to every student in every neighborhood while prioritizing equity and compassionate relationships. The vision of the Ferguson Florissant School District is for all learners to graduate believing that anything is possible and prepared to realize those possibilities. The previous meeting contained the majority, or the vast majority, of the disbursements. We had some additional disbursements that wanted to bring to the board, and these are all accounts payable disbursements, any amount of $710,207.96. That concludes the disbursements report.
Are there any questions for Dr. Singleton on the disbursements that remain? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the disbursements as presented?
Some move.
Moved by Graves.
Second.
Second by Dunn. Any discussion? Thank you for providing the reconciliations for February as well. It's helpful to see that we are caught up on those reconciliations as we manage our money. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or seeing none, we'll do roll call.
Dr. Graves?
Yes.
And Dr. Thurman?
Yes.
Secretary votes yes. Mr. Tyson?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
And Dr. Martin?
Yes, motion carries.
Oh, Dr. Paul Walker?
Yes.
Sorry.
Motion carries. Thank you. It's been requested by the board, some board members, to take a five-minute break before we start the next two heavy topics, so we'll take a five-minute recess and return at 7:40. We're gonna come back together. At this time, we are gonna, according to get to our preliminary budget with Dr. Singleton. According to Policy 6011, the administration shall provide the Board of Education with a budget estimate for the next fiscal year. The estimate must contain estimated receipts by source, fund, and estimated dispersments by purpose and funds. The administration will be prepared a preliminary budget with anticipated revenues and expenditures. I just want to make it clear, this is just, this is not even the draft budget. This is just preliminary numbers that will change between now and May. And so I just want to make sure folks know that these are not final numbers. These are just preliminary numbers that we're using based on estimates. As we learn more information, by policy, we have to present this tonight. In May is really when the actual budget comes together after our suggestions. This is a chance for the board to give some opportunity of feedback or direction for administration. And so therefore, we're having preliminary budget first, then cost-saving measures. Dr. Singleton?
Thank you. All right. Good evening again, everyone. So I will go right into the preliminary budget presentation. We've read the mission and vision on the previous agenda item. So let's move into slide number three. Thank you, Dr. Martin, for eloquently articulating that this is just an estimate, okay? We do not expect these numbers to be final. There is a lot of work that goes into the budget between now and May, and of course, the final adopted budget in June. Per state rules is that the final district budget have to be adopted by June 30th. And so we've got a long way to go, but this is kind of a start of how we're getting there, so to speak. So we also thank Mr. Flick for his comment because we're certainly seeing the recommendations that are being made. Tonight, you're gonna see what happens in each of the funds, and so we're able to see this kind of a different version. But we also certainly want to look at each of the fund and the overall fund balance. And so if we look at our, the first green column is the Fund, Fund 11, which is your general fund, okay? Your general fund is typically handles salaries, benefits for your non-certified, okay? That's your catch-all account. It's an unrestricted account, and it pretty much handles anything that the restricted funds do not handle. And so we're looking at about $70 million in revenues in the general fund, and about $66 million of expenditures. Also in Fund 20, the second green column over, looking at about $72 million. This is our teachers' fund. All the money in this fund are restricted for salaries and benefits for those who hold a teaching certification, all right? And so that's very important to know there. And so we see about $72.8 million in Fund 20, about $71.3 million in expenditures. Those two funds together make up what we call unrestricted funds, okay? And so we see right now that the unrestricted fund balance is about, I'm sorry, the unrestricted fund balance is about 11.29%, okay? Again, minimally, we should be looking at somewhere around 15% or higher, and so we certainly want to keep track and keep our eyes on that unrestricted fund balance. The other two funds have more restrictions. We call those restrictive funds. Fund 30 is used for debt services, and so the only thing that typically happens in that fund is you're paying bond obligations, you're paying principal and interest payments on any debt outstanding that the district has. So we're looking at about $4 million in revenues there, about $3 million in expenditures, and so we're seeing about an ending fund balance of about $7.2 million. And we see a huge percentage of fund balance here, 240%, okay? Let me pause and say, while that looks like an astronomical number, okay, the amount of money in that fund, $7 million, is very minor compared to the $150 million in the budget. So that number does absolutely nothing, okay, to increase the fund balance, the overall fund balance, all right? So I just want to be sure we're clear. When we see a number like that and we want to average it with the other two numbers, that that's not. The weight in that fund, the $7 million, is very small compared to the $140 million or so that exists in the other two funds. And so while debt services looks very attractive, that simply means we are able to meet our bond payments, our bond obligations without any issues. Fund 40 is also a restricted fund. It's for capital projects, and this fund typically will bring in about $3 million preliminarily, will spend about five. And so this is typically a fund where historically, the district has had to transfer from the general fund in order to cover the overages here. One of the reasons that we overspend in this fund is because we do not levy enough, okay, in capital projects, okay? The tax levy does not give us enough there, and so we have to transfer from the general fund to cover any additional costs as well there. So that fund will probably always or should hold just about a 0% fund balance there, okay, because we have to transfer from the general fund to cover anything outstanding there. So the total of all funds, we're looking at about $150 million in revenues next year. Again, this is preliminary. As we get into April and May and we learn more about those, the makeup of those monies, those numbers could change. And so we're gonna definitely keep our eye out there. On expenditures, about $146 million. And so as the directive of the board came to us, we needed to increase the fund balance by at least $3 million, okay? We know that we're not gonna be able to solve all of our budget woes in one fiscal year. So we heard the feedback, okay? Do it in increments, all right? And so I think the board was very generous, at least is considering allowing us to grow by $3 million rather than trying to, you know, to cut, or to make massive cuts to try and resolve everything just in one fiscal year. And so again, the overall fund balance is 15.53%. That's overall, okay? But again, as we've heard tonight, what's really most important is that 11.29%, okay? That is unrestricted monies. That is really operations. That's day-to-day operations in our school district. That's teacher salaries. That's general fund salaries. That really, that's unrestricted monies. It does not have, the board can give directive on how those funds are to be spent. The other two funds are restricted in nature, and so there's very little interpretation of what can be done with those funds. I'm gonna continue on. Also, again, we're still going to have to borrow, okay? According to the preliminary budget, we are still going to have to borrow, my projection says up to $25 million. Hopefully we'll have a more conservative number, a more approximate number as we get to the final budget. But right now, we're still thinking about roughly about $25 million that we will have to borrow to make it through December 31st, 2025. And as a reminder, this year, we were authorized to borrow up to nine and a half million. We did borrow $7 million to get us through December of the last fiscal year, or last calendar year, December 31st, 2024. Let me go on to the next slides, and the next slides really just kind of give you some detail as to what makes up the revenue sources. I particularly like these slides because it kind of tells you the picture of the school district. It kind of paints the narrative, where do we get our funds, okay? And so when we're talking about local revenues, all right, the preliminary budget has about $94 million in local revenues, okay? The majority of that coming from current and delinquent taxes, okay? Those are our real estate property taxes. That's the taxes that the homeowners who fall into the Ferguson, Florissant School District, those are the taxes that you all pay. You have paid, and certainly kudos to all of our residents because we have collected the $65 million or so that we have budgeted in this year's budget, and we're certainly hoping and banking that the additional monies next year will come in as anticipated as well. Prop C is the sales tax. That's the one cent sales tax. The district gets, and we budget about $14 million for there. M&amp;M is merchants and manufacturers. It's a commercial tax. We got about $11 million there that we budget. And then there's some interest that we budget on investments, certainly not to the tune of about $1.7 million that we thought we were gonna get this past year. But the interest, and also there are a few other smaller categories that all come under local, that we pretty much budget, maybe between a million and $2 million there. The county revenues, okay, about $1.7 million. The biggest of that being obviously state-assessed railroad and utility taxes. So those are for railroads and utilities that pay taxes in the school district. You've got fines, sheets, and overplus, that's kind of surplus monies that come in every now and then, sheets or property, that unclaimed property that the district tends to benefit from as well, that happens at the county level. And then there's some domestic insurance tax money as well. On the state level, this is kind of the second biggest bucket of money that we receive in this school district, about $40 million. The majority of that money comes from basic formula. It is a complex formula that looks at a lot of things. Attendance is one, okay? That basically determines the amount of revenues that we get in the school district. We do get reimbursements for transportation, early childhood sped, classroom trust. Those are gaming revenues, early childhood PAT, career ed. These are state grants that we get in the school district, little bit in food service, public placement, and also some other state revenues. The next category is our federal revenues, okay? And we're talking about close to $14 million in federal revenues, all right? Those are Medicaid reimbursements that we get, some ROTC funds, career ed, EC sped. A big one here is our federal and federal lunch and breakfast programs. We are reimbursed a certain dollar amount for feeding our kids breakfast and lunch, and that typically amounts to a pretty substantial amount of money in revenues on the federal lunch and breakfast side, okay? Also, the Title program brings in a substantial amount of money for the school district, more than $4 million, and the Title is packaged. You got Title I, which is for low income, and again, we are a Title I district. Title II is teacher quality. Those grants are geared towards improvement of instruction, Title III, Title IV, and we've got a couple others, Park and CTE as well. And so that's kind of the focus on the federal revenues. And again, this is preliminary. As we get to closer to May and June, we will have a better gauge on if the district will receive these funding amounts in totality. And so that's where we are. There is a category we call Other. It's a catch-all category. One of the things that we have in Other revenues is our transportation. One of the things that we have in Other revenues is our transportation fees that we bill to other districts. This is where our McKinney-Vento students come into play. We do provide transportation for those scholars as well. And so we bill other school districts as well as they bill us, okay? And so we've got about $200,000 that we have budgeted on the revenue side for that as well. All right? So moving on to the expenditures, of course, we know that in every school district, the number one expenditure is going to be salaries and benefits. That's true with our district as well. The vast majority of our budget, 80, 85% goes to salary and benefits. And so the expenditures, again, we had a preliminary budget on the 12th. The, the, now the preliminary numbers, after a lot of conversation and a lot of meetings, and we've had quite a few meetings to just determine where we need to be. And so again, these are the numbers for salaries for the preliminary budgets. $2.8 million coming from Title. The FTE is the full-time equivalent, full-time employee. That's 41.3. You'll see some decimals, and that simply reflects the fact that people are paid from multiple programs. And so part of the salary could come from the district. Part of the salary could come from a federal program. And so when you see a .3 or a .2 or a .5, it simply means that there's a partial salary being paid by that funding source that, and then the other portion is paid somewhere else. And so we get some disproportionate dollars through special school districts, $328,000 there. The FTE, those are the employee accounts in those positions. Administrative central office, we've gone down to 22.2 individuals. Administrative at the building level, down to 40, okay? At $4.9 million. On the certificated side, 612.5 at $41.7 million. Non-certificated, 680 at about $24.2 million. Also, we budget for stipends. We budget for overtime as well on the salary side. On the benefit side, we've got about $30.9 million. That is a rough estimate at this point. Our insurance committee has yet to meet to really determine how we're going to land. But preliminary estimates are at least about an 8% increase to expect on the medical side, okay? That goes, those benefits, what are they? That's PSRS, that's PERS, that's Medicare, Social Security. And we have a district that certainly helps contribute to those. These are employer-sponsored benefits as well. So about $30.9 million on the benefit side. On purchase services, we've got about $17 million budget. We've certainly made some reductions on the purchase services side. There are several, and these are just a few. These are certainly not an exhaustive list. But just a few of the contracts that we've looked at and then we've made some adjustments to this school year. Aramark, for instance, gave us back at least $300,000. Syntejix, we were able to forego the Syntejix payment for this school year and put the payment into next year's budget at half the cost. And so we certainly appreciate Syntejix for being very generous. That is the panic alert system that a lot of our teachers and administrators have at the building level. Skyward, that is our software that we use. We migrated over to Skyward last year. Music insurance, a big cost, almost $4 million, and that is insurance. That is a mandate. You must have insurance to cover you in the event of anything that can happen in school districts. And so we saw a huge increase this year in our music insurance. And we certainly have to benefit for, we have to budget for some kind of a modest increase next year as well. Communication software, we spent about $143,000 in total. There are several software packets that we use. Our SRO contract, they did give us back a little bit of money on the SRO contract as well. Went from 900 to 825,000. Emerges, they provide us a lot of contractual labor. We reduced that contract as well. And also about 207, 207,000 on the Marco, which is our copier lease as well. So we've made some significant reductions to purchase services. Also on the 6400s, those are just our supplies, okay? $8.3 million. We gave each building a per-student allocation. And so based on that per-student allocation, obviously our buildings will be able to provide general supplies for instruction, technology, paper, those kinds of things in general supplies. Capital outlay, $5.3 million. This is where we do all of our capital projects, okay? These are our roof replacements, our HVAC systems, fire systems, lighting. This is where we buy equipment from, okay? And that comes to the tune of about $5.3 million in capital outlay. Also on the expense side, under 6600, we say Other. The preliminary budget puts about $3.7 million in. On the long-term loans, those are loans that are more than a year. And so we've got a few bonds that are out there that have, that have, that we're still paying on. So about $1.9 million that we budget for principal payment of the bonds. The interest, about a million dollars, okay? In interest on debt services. Also, we had to factor into the fact that if we're going to borrow $25 million of tax anticipation note, that's the TAN money, then we had to certainly build some interest in there as well. Today's interest rates would probably be at about 7%, 7.06. And so we've got about $368,000 that we need to budget for interest once we take out the tax anticipation note. And also $372,000 for facility capital interest that we're paying on as well, okay? As we mentioned, the, the percentages as well, fund balance, 11.29% unrestricted. That's both the general and special fund. And debt services, those are restricted funds. Debt services and capital projects. Again, we see a huge number in debt service. But the fact that that's only $7 million out of the total $150 million, it does absolutely nothing to increase the overall fund balance. Again, capital projects, because we don't even levy enough from the start, those monies have to be transferred. And then finally, again, overall, 15.53% on the overall fund balance. That's looking at all, all four of our funds combined. That concludes the presentation. And again, I want to emphasize that this is preliminary. There will be a number of changes that happen between now and May, which calls for the first reading of the budget. And so we will be working diligently to true up some of these numbers. We already know at least one number, Dr. Martin, on capital projects that we certainly need to, to account for with the sale of Airport Road. And there's some other minor adjustments that we will certainly be, be putting into the budget between now and the final budget in June. So that concludes my preliminary budget presentation, and I certainly appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dr. Singleton. Again, want to appreciate, make it clear that this is a preliminary budget. There's not even a draft budget. It's preliminary. Appreciate, I think, since I've been on the board, I feel like this is the most detailed we received at a preliminary budget at least to get understanding where all the money comes from. We'll start with Dr. Powell Walker, work our way down to Mr. Bailey at the end for questions. So, Dr. Powell Walker?
Thank you. So, good evening. Thank you for being here. Thank you for all the work you put into this. As I start with my questions, I always feel like it's important to acknowledge that you inherited this budget, right? And so some of the questions that I know I have might be a little difficult, but just know it's not personal. It's just like it's where we are. I wanted to ask if, if we go back to the slide that looks at 6100, which is salaries?
Yes, ma'am.
We know that one of the reasons why we are where we are today is because there was a miscalculation of the number of staff members in the budget that was presented to the board. And so I, I would like it if you could describe to us the process that you use to come up with the number of FTEs for each area? Because I just want to be sure that those numbers are accurate. Yeah, so that's kind of the thing I'd like to know about first.
Sure. And, and, and I certainly appreciate that question. I think the person that's most qualified to answer that question is our human resources person, and we have worked collaboratively. You know, so I can shed some light. I think Dr. P. Walker probably can shed a little bit of light on this as well. So, the, and Dr. P. Walker, let me let you start, and then I, I can come in afterwards.
Sure. And I apologize that Dr. Haywood is not here this evening. She's sick and ill. But I do have, and you will receive, Board, the staffing data spreadsheet, which identifies some various categories. That spells out specifically all of the positions within the district based on admin, CEO, admin building, certified adjusted, non-certified adjusted, and any changes, DISPRO as well as federal dollars. And so each of the positions are listed there. And they identify people, positions, and, and amounts. And so those dollars then are filtrated into the budget. And so that's how the numbers are coming together.
Okay, so we feel really confident about this number.
Yeah, so this is where we are as of today. And this number has certainly, day by day, it, it continues to change. It continues to change. I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. And so I want to also ask, on this budget, each line item, of course, has a budgeted amount. And I know this is a preliminary budget, but ideally, you kind of want to stay within the realm of this number that you've come up with, though it is an estimate. And so in light of where we are, I'm curious to know what internal guardrails have you all put in place to make sure that we have those checks and balances that are necessary to make sure we don't find ourselves in this situation again?
Yeah. So no, that, that's always a good question, Dr. Powell Walker. And, and so, and I think you've asked that question before. And, and I can't remember exactly verbatim the, the response that we gave. But I can tell you, there are some, there are some things that we put in place, you know, going forward to just make sure that we stay aligned with, with our spending. You know, first of all, we're going to, to do an amended budget at least once. You know, that's, that's always going to help us get more clarity. You know, we, we do a preliminary budget. We've done an amended budget. We've done a preliminary budget. We're going to do a first reading. We're going to do a final budget. You're going to get monthly reports that's going to track the progress of each of these accounts. I think it used to be where the, 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 the reports were just in your package. You approve them. But you all are asking those questions. And so you're, you know, I'm, I'm obligated to stand before you on a monthly basis to report out on some of these numbers. We, again, what, what wasn't happening prior to is that finance and HR, you know, weren't always communicating. And so we are. The, the team now is communicating. And, and there are lots of players at the table. I like the fact that, you know, the, 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 all of the cabinet members were there. And we all share in some of the, you know, some of the, the, the numbers that are presented, are being presented here. And so again, to, to monitor those, to make sure that anybody that goes over, you know, there are going to be budget controls there to keep you from going over. There are things that we put in place. We've got an additional oversight policy that's there as well. And so there are several things that, that, that we have put in place that will hopefully put us in a better situation to be able to manage and track where we are going forward.
Okay, thank you for sharing that. And I do want you to know that I know that I asked the question before. But I asked it again because it wasn't clear.
Okay.
So I wanted to, I wanted to better understand it. And it's still a little fuzzy.
Okay.
As you describe it. I do think it's really important in light of where we are to always be able to articulate what we're doing internally to monitor the budget because of where we are. So if I ask it, I may ask it again.
No, no, no.
It could come up again, okay?
Please, please don't take that the wrong way. I, I was trying to remember the answer that I gave you when I said that. But absolutely, I, I welcome those questions.
Okay, and I also want to ask about the, the general supplies one. I don't know if that, we can go to that slide. I wanted to ask about the technology. I wanted to, this, this is something I also mentioned before, which is the usage of the programs that we have. I know that there are lots of programs that our students are using. And I guess, of course, I'm always concerned about impact, right? Sometimes you can look at the program maybe and find out that no one's really using it. So I'm trying to figure out, when you, when you did your preliminary number, was there consideration given to programs that are actually being utilized by teachers and students?
Yes, ma'am. And again, this is a, this, this here is a collective. When we talk about general supplies, you know, technology and things, these, these are Chromebooks that cost less than $1,000. I think the threshold is $1,000 to capitalize an asset, okay? And so these are Chromebooks. These are things of that nature that will be going into the classrooms. You know, other supplies, other instructional material. And so, yes, we met with our technology team. And they made cuts to programs that were either ineffective or we just did not have the high usage as well. And so, yes, our technology team played a role in helping us develop these numbers as well.
And I have the same question about instructional materials. You know, just thinking about curriculum and other things. And I'm just curious to know, was the same process used in putting this number together? Are we looking at places where there might be duplication or programs where we just continue to approve them from year to year, but maybe nobody's using it, or it's not having an impact?
Yes, ma'am. And I know, and, and P. Walker and Brandon, I'm going to ask you all to help chime in on that as well. And I, I remember specifically, Mr. Murray, us having a conversation with one of those vendors. And we were going to, we've reduced some, 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 some costs in certain, in some of those areas. But in terms of the instructional programs, that's not always my best area. So let me let the, the experts answer that.
I don't know about expert, but I can, it's, I know we've made some initial cuts. I think the initial budget was about $2.1 million for curriculum. I think at this time, we're proposing about 1.8 and some change. I see heads nodding with my team. So yes, so we've made some cuts, Dr. Powell Walker, so far. But we're continuing to look at programs to determine if we need to make some further cuts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Graves?
I just need some clarification, just real quick. I think I missed something in your initial, initial explaining when you had the four different categories.
Yes.
On the preliminary budget. Can you share again what's Fund 11, 20, 30, and 40?
Yes. Fund 11 is a general fund. That's kind of the catch-all. It's unrestricted, pretty much. So 11 and 20, when we say unrestricted, it doesn't have limitations on what can be done with that fund, okay? The board has the obligation, the, the, the authority to set what happens in those funds. So that's, Fund 11 is for your non-certs. You know, that's where all the general supplies and things fall in. Fund 20 is your teacher's fund, okay? That is strictly for salaries and benefits for those that have a teaching certification, all right? So the, the numbers you see in those funds are reflected for certificated staff. The Fund 30, again, it's a small amount of money. The, the last two funds are, are much smaller than the first two. But the Fund 30 is for debt services. That is strictly used to pay for your outstanding bond issues and obligations. And then Fund 40 is your capital projects fund, which is only restricted to capital projects. So that's your big HVAC projects, your roofing projects, those, yes.
And then, again, and thank you so much. I guess my biggest question is, just in regards to the possible federal cuts and the federal revenues that are coming in. And I know there's, nothing has been actually stated that is going to happen. But are we putting anything in place, like a second type of budget, if we actually face some revenue issues with federal dollars coming in? And like, almost like, if this happens, this is, we kind of, we're going to be good and we don't have to act quickly? Like, are there any proactive measures being done with the actual making of this new budget with that being in mind? Because we just really don't know.
Sure, sure. And I'm going to let, you know, P. Walker is the federal programs expert. And so I'll let her comment first, and then I'll try to follow up.
Federal programs expert, but absolutely not the expert of all things that are happening in our country right now. So as it relates to federal programs... So as it relates to federal programs, they've spoken a lot about the fact that Title I funding, more than likely, I'll say that, will be safe. That two through, two and three, two is, of course, related to professional development for staff. Three is related to ELL, that those have been discussed, as you know. Four, we speak more about, it's well-rounded students, so it touches a lot of different things. There hasn't been a lot of conversation about taking funds away from that. There's been a lot of conversation around CTE and expanding that, career and technical education for children. And so there hasn't been a bunch of conversation about removing those things. Remember, though, that all of these grants that we're talking about are on a reimbursement basis. So we have to spend district money first, and then we get reimbursed for it. So at this time, 1, 4, and the CTE programs seem to be safe, but we'll check the news.
And then I guess the biggest one for me is just kind of that lunch and breakfast thing. Has there been any conversations? And then what do we need to put in place to, for that one?
Yeah, I haven't heard a lot of chatter or conversation about any reductions to the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program. They have been very stable over time. And so, you know, and her response will be mine as well. We're just going to continue to check the news to make sure. But at this point, we have no reason to do anything massive in those areas, simply because those programs seem to be safe at this point.
I guess my biggest thing is, I'd just rather be proactive than reactive and just really figuring now, because we know something is coming with that, and not necessarily knowing what it is, but just to see if there's any way that we can be proactive on that end. And that's all the questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Thurman?
I have one question. If we could go to 6,200 benefits, no, no, go back. Stay on the same, stay on the same, yeah, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and for the 25, 26 school year, there's 11 million dollars projected? I mean, that's preliminary, on the preliminary budget there, 17.4, right? And then we go...
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, and then we go to 25, 26 to 19.5, right? You may have said this before, but could you remind me of how you got to this new number? What is the percentage? Is that, where did you get the number from? The 25, 26, because we're talking about an 8 million dollar, is that right? Is that correct?
Oh, you're, okay. I think I know what you're referring to was the total deficit, but the...
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not the deficit. I'm looking at benefits.
That was the same question that I was just asked. It's the between 11th and the 20th, one, I mean, the Fund 11 and Fund 20. These numbers are not the, it's not the same group.
They're not the same. Okay, that's what I just want to make sure that I'm reading this.
Ones for the budget for certified staff, and the others for the budget.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay.
So, yes.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah. Fund 11 are benefits that the district pays or incurs for non-certificated staff. So those are your aides, custodians, those employees.
So we were kind of pretty much asking the same question.
Yeah, and then Fund 20 is for teachers.
Okay. Okay, I think I'm okay now.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Couple of questions. One, just seems odd to me. Under cap, or Fund 30, what do you spend $500 for in purchase of services?
Dr. Martin, let me look at it. I don't know.
It just seems like a very odd, like, $500, when you're talking about millions of just... The other thing is, so what are we spending so much in capital outlay on that we keep transferring funds to? We've heard that from some comments. I'm just curious, why are we transferring 2.7 million dollars to capital outlay if we're not bringing in the revenue for it? What are we doing with that money?
Yeah, so, and I'll share this with you. A lot of districts don't even levy into the capital outlay fund. A lot of districts place all the levy money into the general fund. And from the general fund, you can transfer to cover any other, the other district, the other expenses. But in this particular case, you know, 5 million dollars in capital projects, again, those are roofing projects that are on the district now, okay? Those are HVAC, when our systems and equipment and things of that nature break down. So most of this is facilities work. This is what facilities is doing to keep our buildings functioning, to keep our grounds running. And again, we're, we just, the levy is like, I think it's 20 cents. That levy just does not generate enough money to fully cover all of the projects that are necessary in the school district. So it's really facilities. I think Mr. O'Neal could probably certainly expand on that. But it's not only facilities. They, these, Fund 40 is also any computer or equipment purchase that's over a thousand dollars, you know? But the majority of that falls in facilities.
So are you saying they're essential, like we absolutely have to have it? Or are these things that we could reduce in that area as well?
Well, we made some reductions. That was a few of the things that we've put off, I'll say. But at some point, I think there's one, I know, and I don't know if Mr. O'Neal is here. There was one school that we have to put a roof on to the tune of a million dollars or so. We've been pushing that down the barrel for a while. It might be Hall's Ferry. For some reason, I think that's the school that I know that we're going to have to put a new roof on, okay?
And I guess go back to Dr. Paul Walker's question, like, are there big technology purchases that are coming out of there that we need to still do? Just trying to figure out where the 5.3 is coming from to see why we keep overspending that area.
Yeah, yeah. There are some computer leases in here. We do have some leases that we do on computers as well. But again, I think the majority of that is your HVAC, is your roofing, it's those projects.
Got it. And we did pay back this year's loan already, just for the record, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I guess the question, if you go to preliminary budget on other revenue for transportation fees to others. Certainly, I see us paying a lot out. We paid another 300-some thousand dollars tonight to other districts for transportation. I'm just curious, are we billing the other districts as much as they're billing us?
I'm going to let Mr. Mitchell.
It just seems like we're paying out way more than what we're receiving back.
I am an expert in this response, so I'm excited. Yes, sir, so the districts up until, I believe, mid-March have been invoiced to 200-plus thousand dollars. In my report this week to you all, we did receive a check from Hazelwood, I believe, for about 30-plus thousand dollars. And then I've directed my team to reissue invoices for those we've not collected from at this time.
Got it. I guess to go to Dr. Paul Walker's question before, like safeguards, right? Do we have safeguards in place to make sure that we are making sure we're billing everyone? Just, it seems like they're certainly billing us.
Correct.
So we should make sure we're billing them, when we just paid another district getting a hundred thousand dollars almost in McKinney-Vento Transportation, which, of course, not saying we shouldn't, but it just seems like we're getting billed a lot more than what we're billing other people.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
So do we have safeguards in place to make sure everyone who we're supposed to build is actually getting billed, and we're following up on billing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Absolutely. And we've been sending those bills out month to month. And so we are using a program that allows us to be a little bit more aggressive, I think is the word to use with our purchasing, because we have to come up with our own software and our own system to do these type of invoices. But we are sending those out. I am in the network with people in similar positions. We've had some conversations, which I think is how one check we received here recently came about, but we'll continue to pursue those options.
Thank you. Ms. Dunn?
Thank you for your presentation. I just have one quick question for my own understanding. When we look at the expenditures for purchased services in general supply and general supplies, I just would like some clarification. I noticed that instructional materials is underneath general supplies. Is that more like consumables or materials that we are needing in classrooms to make sure instruction is able to take place? Or does that include things like our curriculum? And I ask because I notice in purchased services, most of those services, well, those services are not related to actual instruction. But there's, and I know you said it was not a full list, and we won't see a full list in the preliminary budget. But the list that we do have is well far from 17 million. So I'm just, if we can get some more information on that, where curriculum is and so forth.
Sure, sure. And it could fall in either category. If it's in a 6,300 account, it's generally a purchased services, so it's a program that we're purchasing. But if it's in a general supply account, here instructional material is more so items that we purchase for classroom instruction and usage. So it could be books, it could be, you know, those kinds of materials at the 6,400 level. The 6,300 level, you're paying for the company, the program, the software. But at 6,400, you're actually paying for the instructional material.
So would you say, what would you say the majority, then, of purchased services encompasses? Like, what types of services are in there, if you can say? I'm just curious, because again, that's a large number that isn't, and I know you said everything's not in there, but it's not really accounted for in this list.
Well, purchased services by definition is something that we contract, it's a service that we contract with, not using our own employees, okay? And so, again, one of the big numbers here is music, okay? That's insurance that we're required to have to operate as a school district. Another big number here is Airmark, okay? That's our food service. We contract with Airmark to provide food services to, you know, employees, to our scholars, to eat and things of that nature. We got a lot of other purchased services contracts with vendors who supply us staff, okay? That's a big one. Staffing services fall under this purchased services umbrella as well, because we get a lot of our employees from agencies, okay? Custodians, our aides, cooks, they all come from agencies. And so they make up a lot of, a big number of that. Our SRO contract, okay, it's almost a million dollars. Or it was. We made some reductions. But those are external services that we bring into the district to service our scholars.
Thank you for that. So while I know that someone else will be sitting in this seat come in a few weeks, what I would be interested, as a community member, as you continue through with the draft of the budget and the final budget, is almost like, and I know that we had a very pretty budget in the past, almost, like, I'm thinking like a pie chart. So like you just said, a lot of this is staffing, and you gave all those different pieces. What would that be of that portion? Just so that it makes it easy to see, easy to read as a community member, because when we're seeing these numbers, sometimes, I know I was sitting here when we first got it, trying to add it up, and I'm like, well, that doesn't quite make sense, but I'm sure he'll explain that. And you did, saying it's just a portion. So just thinking visually how we can really make this simple and easy to understand at glance. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tyson?
Hey, Dr. Singleton.
Mr. Tyson.
Prior to coming to the school board, I spent 25 years in the mortgage industry. In that role, I helped individuals, businesses, institutions develop sound financial strategies, optimizing cash flow, and being responsible in managing borrowing funds. First, I want to acknowledge and thank Dr. Singleton and his financial team for his extensive work in putting, in helping keeping our district operational through the challenging financial season we're in. This past year, it was recommended and approved by the board the utilization of a TAN, Tax Anticipated Note. And TANs are certainly a recognized and often necessary tool which districts who face financial gaps, revenue gaps, as we did, to go to. And I understand the rationale behind it and why the recommendation, and this is why I approved it as a board member. As one board member, I supported it. However, tonight I respectfully ask us again to broaden our view. Again, there is a viable alternative that I believe deserves a serious consideration, and that is a sweep account. A sweep account is a secure automated financial tool that transfers excess cash from an operating account into an interest-bearing investment, such as collateralized money market account and repurchase agreement. At the end of the day, at the end of each day, idle cash is swept into an account. When funds are needed for expenses, they are swept back into the operating account automatically. This is smart and a strategic way to earn interest on our funds that we already have without compromising any access to these funds. Now, why does this matter? We are needing to make cuts, no doubt, to reduce costs. But at the end of the day, this district is not facing a revenue shortage. We're facing a timing with the revenue that is coming in versus the expenses that is going out, okay? By defaulting to borrowing through the TAN, we should, not just defaulting to borrowing through the TAN, we should leverage our funds that we already have more effectively. And here are the key points, and I'm going to concede. The district existing fund balance can be used for the sweep account. Under Missouri law, RSMO 165051, school districts are allowed to invest funds that are not immediately needed for current expenditures, as long as these investments are safe. This includes general fund, capital project fund, debt services funds, and other fund balances not tied up into daily operations. By utilizing a portion of our fund balances through sweep account, we can generate daily interest, improve our cash flow, and possibly reduce and eliminate the need to borrow. I'm going to say that one more time. By getting a sweep account, we can eliminate the need to borrow without touching restricted and unavailable funds. Here's the comparison. If we borrow another 25 million dollars through a TAN, as suggested tonight, at just a 4% interest, we could be facing 1 million dollars or more in interest and fees. Monies that we cannot recover. A sweep account flips this equation. Instead of paying to access our capital, we earn from what we already have. This is not about adding risk, it's about using another tool that's at our disposal to be more financially responsible in that vision. My position as a board member is I cannot in good conscience support borrowing another 24 million dollars with the TAN without first conducting a full and transparent review of a sweep account as an alternative. We're all looking for ways to save money, but, and again, these cuts is bothering me. But to spend another 1 million dollars to borrow money when there are alternatives that a district this size can explore in the financial tools, I think it's worth. And I believe our community, our staff, and our students deserve to see both options fully and compare them before borrowing decisions are made. Again, this is not a rejection of a TAN, it is just a call for us to be more due diligent. We have more options available to us than just a TAN. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson. Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, I just have a couple of points. First point is, Dr. Graves has brought it up, and I keep saying it, it is so much helpful if we have scenarios. We understand that things aren't as accurate as they need to be, but scenarios give the community a look about strategy. You know, I think strategy is important when you're working through budgets. The second thing is, we made comments in the past about ESAR funds being used for capital projects. Can you expand upon how the ESAR funds have been used for capital projects?
Sure, and of course, I'll call on the ESAR expert, Dr. P. Walker, as well. We're all experts tonight, right? So the ESAR funds were, you know, the infusion of funds that school districts had to really combat COVID. They were originally designed to, you know, mitigate COVID, improve air quality, those kinds of things. And then, you know, some of the revisions, some of the allowable costs were salary and other things. But in terms of capital projects, Dr. P. Walker, let me let you, because I know our website, and she was very gracious to make sure that all of our ESAR expenditures were posted on the district's website, so the community can see this. But Dr. P. Walker, you want to explain some of the capital projects that we undertook with ESAR?
Absolutely. I was just pulling up the website so that I could see some of it.
I was just pulling up the website so that I could see some of them. Um, we are actually, we just finished up our final, um, ESER project here in this building, uh, taking care of the HVAC components, but you will see in several of our other buildings around the district that, um, gymnasiums, HVAC upgrades, at McClure, McClure North, Halls Ferry, Robinwood, Lee Hamilton, Berkeley, Ferg Middle, air handler replacements were done here, um, HVAC and AC upgrades. Thank you, Terry, for showing on over there. Um, innovation, Duchesne, Griff, I mean, pretty much all of our schools received some type of kitchen AC upgrade and/or HVAC throughout their, um, their spaces, our drinking fountain upgrades. There were a lot. We spent, uh, sixteen million, four hundred eighty-four thousand, eight hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety-three cents to outfit our buildings, um, in a way that would help us to mitigate, um, the COVID pieces. We did flooring components to ensure that we took up the carpets so that we could easily wipe up the floors if there was an issue. Roof replacements were done, chiller replacements were done throughout our district. So I know recently, we were speaking with some folks with, um, FFNEA the other day about, um, the MGT component. And so some of the things that are on that report actually have upgrades to them because we have done that work. As I said, we just finished up all of those things in the last month. And so ESER, at the end of this school year, ESER will be cleared out.
And I thank you for that. And the reason why I was asking that is because of that report. That report stated a lot of things that the district needed as far as, uh, transportation and different things that I've asked for information about. We still have a lot of outstanding projects that we need to be notified as to far as what outstanding projects like have to be done, because that's important as, as we forecast our budget, so we don't have any surprises. And I've asked for that information as far as the capital projects that are still outstanding within the district. That's gonna be very helpful a, as you present information to us.
Yes, sir.
That's just my comment.
Okay. Mr. Terry?
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none? Thank you so much.
Well, I do just have a recommendation. Um, can we, I don't know if this is the time to do it, but can we direct, um, Dr. Singleton to conduct a side-by-side analyst, analysis of both the tax, the TAN and the sweep account to give us both, to give the board the options of how it looks side-by-side, so that we can show our stakeholders that we're not just being willing to act, but being willing to act wisely, because again, given options is better than just defaulting to what we know. There are more options out there.
What I'm hearing is if we can have the preliminary, the draft budget in, by May, if we can have some, uh, information, understanding of options as we prepare for the final budget approval in June, that we have an understanding that we can have some time, that gives you some time to talk to our financial people as well and figure out what are the options and let us know legal risk and all those things. Correct. So based on the twenty-five million dollars, kind of what their opinions are, I appreciate that. Is anyone opposed to that on the board if they bring that in May? Thank you, Mr. Tyson. Thank you, Dr. Singleton. With that, uh, next up is item number, apologize what item number it is, seven. Um, certainly the one that we are not looking forward to the most, but certainly as we've been hearing today. Board, how we're gonna do this is, uh, just for the community to know, we got received this yesterday, our, uh, report of the final recommendations, things continuing involved. The board sent in about twenty-seven questions already for them to incorporate various things. So although you might not hear every single question, please note that we've already submitted twenty-seven questions for them to incorporate in the various presentations tonight. And so, um, they've been working diligently, and certainly when we asked them to take on this role, we did not anticipate us going into this situation, and they are, uh, in a position that they're having to make very difficult decisions that are not easy, and we certainly appreciate their willingness, uh, to help address us. As we think through, uh, other districts we've heard about, uh, St. Louis Public and others, uh, SSD, many of those districts are in a very different financial situation. Although they're deficit spending, they had a reserve that they could deficit spend into. We unfortunately did not have a reserve or fund balance that we could spend into nearly to the level of degree that St. Louis Public or SSD have. SSD was around a seventy percent fund balance, and they're trying to get down to thirty-five. St. Louis Public, although deficit spending, had a fund balance that's still substantially above even the twenty percent marker. So we were in a dire financial crisis, which is why the terminology that Ms. Holloman used when we communicated out was a financial crisis, because that is really what we are in. If we do not cut, we will have no money left. Um, and we have to make some decisions. Uh, no one wants to make a decision to affect anyone's livelihood. We want to make sure that we are protecting our children and our programs and our schools. We know our schools, um, sometimes need extra love and care, and many people, it gets hard when you start seeing faces and names and impact. And so, uh, what we're gonna ask is a little change up, just so the board knows. The co-acting superintendents are gonna sit up here, they're gonna go through each recommendation. The board's gonna take a vote on each recommendation instead of, as a whole, just to allow for additional conversation. Instead of that, there will be changes tonight, I anticipate, as always. Um, and again, they're continuing to dive in as they go through this budget. So they'll start with the first overview slide, then we'll stop at STEAM, will be the first recommendation. The board will make a motion, we'll have discussion, we'll vote. Then they'll go to the next recommendation, we'll make a motion, discussion, and vote. Anyone opposed to that? Thank you so much to our co-acting superintendents and all the teams that are working around the clock to make this happen, uh, to get us to a place that ultimately to make decisions what is best for children. Thank you.
Thank you. We want to begin by acknowledging the deep commitment of our teachers, staff, and community members who are here tonight and those who are watching online. We understand that the decisions before us are incredibly difficult and impact the very heart of our schools, to our students, our educators, and the programs that support them. Please know that, as Dr. Martin said, that these financial decisions are not made lightly. We recognize that every position in this district plays a vital role in the success and well-being of our students. Every educator, every support staff member, every program contributes to the strong foundation we have built together. Our goal is to navigate these challenges with transparency, which is why we try and utilize our website to put the information there for all to see, um, and a focus on minimizing the impact on students as much as possible. Everything impacts our students, um, but as much as possible, we are trying to mitigate the situation. While we may not have, may not have made very easy answers, we remain committed to working together to ensure that our district remains strong and continues to serve our students with excellence. And with that, we will take a look at our presentation. So the very first item that is on the, um, presentation, sorry.
Do we have a clicker?
I don't think we do. You got it? Okay.
Can we click up here, sorry? So we make sure we're following along on the screen? Thank you.
All right, and then if the folks upstairs could just kind of follow along with me, please. Um, so we get to this point to where we have been tasked with ensuring the long-term financial stability of the Ferguson-Florissant School District by, while maintaining high-quality educational services, uh, together, along with, uh, partnerships with FFNEA, we've, we've met with the entire cabinet to identify costs. We've, uh, are very thankful for the twelve-hundred-and-four survey responses we've received, the emails, the conversations we've had, uh, in this building and without the, throughout the community. And we've also tried our best to align some of our decisions to the DESI guidelines as well. So to this point, we've identified ten-point-five million dollars of potential cost savings. In the spirit of transparency, we also want to communicate that that ten-point-five million dollars does not include the cuts and the items that were identified on February twenty-sixth, I believe, board meeting. But I do also want to honor the survey data. As we, as we identified trends and themes from that data, we do realize that there needs to be a reduction of administrative overhead and cost, that we do need to do a better job of optimizing school structures and resource allocation. We are making every attempt so possible to improve our budgets and to be more fiscally responsible, and that we've also taken some consideration in terms of adjusting school schedules and transportation, uh, to identify cost savings as well. So thank you to all of you. Your, uh, your feedback, your commentary, your presentations tonight have been very, uh, very impactful, not only for, for me, but I'm sure for Dr. P. Walker as well.
The first item listed is the STEAM school merger recommendation. The administration recommends a school within a school merger of STEAM Academy Middle into the STEAM at MSB campus. The rationale for the merger is cost savings by reducing certified and non-certified staff, limited, but custodians, food service, two high, and one middle, um, teacher. And by adjusting the start times to be on the same, um, level, this would lessen transportation routes and costs. Um, we are also looking at facility optimization, since we are currently underutilizing space at that location, um, the merger would bring STEAM at MSB closer to capacity. Academic and extracurricular benefits for students, as this would enhance learning opportunities through shared facilities and possible programming. This would save approximately six-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand, eight-hundred-sixty-three dollars and ten cents. Long-term solutions could be to combine both schools into a six-twelve configuration, optimizing resources better and further reducing staff redundancies. The twenty-five-twenty-six school year, though, we are looking at school within a school processes in that configuration, um, so that we are, uh, maintaining the student experience and quality of programming without disruption, except the new location. Per the survey results, it is the request of the people that we return to fewer transitions in grade spans. And so again, that is a long-term process, and when we say long-term, we're talking about more than likely the year after next, that we should be able to do some of those components. And so this space could possibly, um, already have some of those things in place. Further here, based on, oops, I'm sorry. Yeah, see if that's up right.
Thank you. Administration recommends a school within a school merger of STEAM Academy Middle into the STEAM at MSB campus. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Thurman? Second by Tyson. We'll start with, uh, we'll go through every board member every time, so if there's questions, uh, ask questions, and then if not, just pass. We'll start with Mr. Bailey this time, go down to, Dr. Powell Walker.
I think, I'm gonna just concern how this is really gonna save money. And what was the rationale behind merging two schools?
Well, when you, when you look at feedback, some of the suggestions indicate that we are not maximizing the capacity of STEAM High School, number one. Um, and so when you look at that, you then try to determine what's the most optimal way to use that space, right? And so with that, if you are merging the two campuses together, there's some significant benefits to that, because now, for instance, something such as a, a gifted child who may need a Algebra II course, that we normally have to do, do ingenuity or through some online platform, that child now can walk into an Algebra II classroom at a high school. Uh, you look at how that will impact the extracurricular activities there, you look at how, since those two schools service both sides of the district, there's quite a few bus routes that have to go to, uh, all points to bring those two kids to two separate locations. And so when you look at all of that, because I believe there's some savings calculated where you are reducing bus drivers and dispatchers and, and honestly, you're reducing wear and tear on your buses, because I don't believe that we've purchased buses, I want to say, Terry, in the last three to four years. And so I know that we've got some excellent folks in our shops who are kind of keeping our buses afloat. Um, and so when you look at all of that and, and some of the conversations we've had with the stakeholders, we believe that it would be in the best interest to merge those two campuses. And then as we talk about twenty-six, twenty-seven, is that right? Am I right? Yeah, twenty, yeah, wow, twenty-six, twenty-seven, then you look at other ways to, to use the existing facility here to offer some other opportunities to be wonderful for children as well.
And then, I thought we had some electric buses coming in as well.
Sixteen buses are en route at some point. We're ready to receive them, I believe, in terms of charging and whatnot, but they have not arrived to this point yet.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That was all the questions I had.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson.
Just a quick question. Um, in the presentation, potential cost, STEAM Middle, seventeen classrooms, twenty-five students, a parentheses, give me, I'm, I'm not sure what that means, because I know there's more than twenty-five.
No, so, no, no, great question, no. Um, and so, uh, when we met with the building principals, when we met with the facilities team, when we walked that particular building, we anticipated having those classrooms serve twenty-five kids at a time. Right? And so, now of course, some classes may have twenty-six, some classes may have nineteen, but we did the numbers as an average of twenty-five kids per classroom. Yes, sir.
Is that, uh, Ms. Dunn?
Thank you. So, uh, my question is on the reducing the amount of staffing. If we're doing school within a school, um, I'm curious which staffing positions are being eliminated to be a part of this six-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand?
There are some, and I'm looking at Jane, so Jane's gonna give me the eye when I mess this up. There are some retirements that are taking place on the campuses that we have considered with this. There are some resignations and some non-renewals that'll be part of this equation. Um, and then when you go from an eight-period day to a seven-period day, the number of teachers change with that calculation as well. So you'll, you'll need less teachers to make it work, and so when you make all those changes, I believe we've identified three on top of the resignations and retirements that would need to be placed in other buildings based off certification in need.
Okay, so then for the staffing that we're reducing, it's, you're talking solely about replacing teachers into different spaces and closing out the positions for resignations and retirees, or is there additional staff that we're reducing as well?
Yeah, so you're also gonna, there'll be some, a custodian that will be in that mix. Um, let me pull up my sheet so I can.
Cafeteria manager.
Cafeteria manager, yes, ma'am. There are some savings with bus drivers and, and other staff as well.
And is that just eliminating the position that was within STEAM Middle, and they'll be able to fill other positions throughout the district, and that position will just be gone now, if I'm understanding correctly?
Based on the schedule, yes.
Based on the schedule.
But, so let's say that, you know, like with anything, if enrollment increases and we have to make a decision based on student enrollment, then of course, we would try to go back and say, you know, we, we, I think it's, I, I, I see Jeff Taylor's face, it's like four-hundred-and-seventy-six high school kids, all right? And then there's two-hundred-and, approximately fifty, middle school kids that are gonna be combined for the two campuses to coexist with them one.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and then I think that I caught it in, um, your answer to Mr. Bailey's question, but I just want to make sure that I've got it. So going into this six-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand, in addition to those retirees, those, um, resignations, we're also talking about eliminating some potential, or some edgenuity classes that we maybe had for students here at STEAM Middle. So you mentioned like Algebra II, for instance, so they may have had to take that class through edgenuity. So we're eliminating that cost, we're eliminating costs for bus routes, and is that all that's going into that? Because I noticed it's down to the dime, um, so I'm just curious if that, that's where the cost saving is, or if there's anything else a part of it.
Yes, ma'am. So you, you're breaking that down to about two-hundred-thousand-plus for the bus drivers. You've got some savings with the dispatchers in here, cafeteria manager, three teachers, a custodian. Terry's even identified how much it will cost us to make that move. And so all of that has been calculated, that sum total of that six-eighty-eight that you see on the presentation tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Just to go on that, are we also looking at the nurse, uh, librarian, some other staffing that would be duplicated services?
Yes, um, in true transparency, we're still trying to figure out the library piece to see if we're gonna have two separate sites with the climate and culture of the books that the kids will have access to, so we're still looking at that part as well.
But the nurse?
The nurse, I believe, should have been kept, but with the staffing pieces, the nurse is just absorbed.
Correct. So we're saving money by eliminating one of the nurse, excuse me, one of the nurses to allow them to fill up and reduce some of our purchase services of nurses, because we have so many vacancies.
But we, but we need to just go back and make sure that per DESI guidelines, based off the number of students, they would need X amount of nurses, which I believe is four-hundred-to-one or something like that, or, okay, all right.
So, thank you for that. I think that, just to go off of that, to add on some of the other savings, was there any secretary cuts from that one, besides attendance ones that are separate? Can you use the microphone?
Not at this time, based on the way the school would be structured. So ideally, our goal was to just simply pick this building up and drop it off inside of STEAM High.
With some reductions.
With some reductions. With some reductions, then we were able to keep the two schools separate as much as possible.
Got it. Certainly, I think that, you know, as you think about even food service, we have a great vacancy rate in there of just like operating food service here and that cost, and then, you know, having STEAM in one place makes some logical sense of sharing staff and those things. So, it seems to make logical sense, that wouldn't be a huge disruption overall. So, thank you. Dr. Thurman?
Yeah, just to ask more about the staffing changes. In terms of administrators, what kind of changes? None?
So, at this point, none this year, because it will be a school within a school.
Okay, so no administrators will be cut when you transfer? And then, counselors and social workers? None? Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Graves.
What was the number of, so what would be the total enrollment with both schools together? And then, what's the capacity?
The total number is about 725 to 750, in terms of the two schools. You're saying for both to be, yes, ma'am, about 725 to 750. I know 476 sticks out to my head for STEAM High. I wanna say 239 to 241 for STEAM Middle right now, currently, but depending on some other recommendations, we may have to absorb some additional students, based off some additional recommendations that may come forth tonight.
Okay, and so, and what's the capacity for MSB?
When it was a high school, it was 1309 is in my head, but is that right? Okay, Terry, 1309 would be the student capacity, I believe. We'll confirm that for you, Terry. I know he's pulling up his chart with the numbers. But even if we do it by the classroom spaces at 57 and do an average of 20 kids per class, I believe it can at least hold 1,000.
I just know, MSB has been running under capacity for a very, 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 very long time.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm happy to see that the school will be used in its entirety, and this is one of the things that I've been saying a long time ago, just in regards to, for the students that would be able to have access to higher-level classes if need be. So, this is basically one of the recommendations that I've been wanting for several years, so thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Powell Walker?
Thank you. I wanted to ask, I know that the, one of the goals here, I think, is to cut down the number of buses. And so, I'm curious, my assumption is that means that we're gonna have maybe middle and high school kids on buses together, and, and I guess also, I'm thinking about the school day as well. And so, I guess I wondered if there, I'm thinking about supervision, right? Like, there's a part of me that wants to say that shouldn't be a thing that we should be concerned about, right? But we are talking about a significant age difference between, for some of the kids. So, I guess I just wondered if any thought had been given to what supervision looks like on the buses, as kids are moving around the building. And again, I'm not assuming anything is going to happen, but I just mention it, because it just might be something to think about.
Yes, ma'am. Great question, and, and one thing I did forget to capture in the presentation is that we have presented it to where we have made a wing specifically for the STEAM Middle portion of the building. In terms of the buses and meeting with Terry and his team, ideally, you would have the one age group sit on one portion of the bus, and one age group sit in the back of the bus, just however the bus driver decides to work it. And then, we've had some discussions about drop-off, when students arrive, to potentially maybe middle school gets off at one door, and high school gets off at another.
Well, I think it'd be kinda hard to get kids to sit where you want them to sit, but I think it's a nice thought, and maybe it's something we could think about. The other thing I wondered about is thinking about the uniforms between the two schools and some similarities, and, and whether or not there might need to be a uniform shirt color, or some sort of a, something that makes, makes it clear that this is a middle school child, just because kids are kids, and although they have a wing, we know
Yes, ma'am.
kids move around or have reasons to go into other parts of the building, so.
Yes, ma'am. And we've had some of that discussion. Of course, if the board gives us the grace to make this decision, then we'll go deeper in that discussion and provide updates, once we finalize some decisions in terms of 25-26 school year.
Is that it, Dr. Powell Walker?
Yes, sorry, yes, that's it.
Any other questions on the board? Seeing none, the motion on the floors. Administration recommends a school within a school merger of STEAM Middle Academy onto the STEAM MSBA campus for savings of $688,853.10. Please call for the vote.
Dr. Thurman? Secretary votes yes. Mr. Tyson?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Dr. Powell Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Graves?
Yes.
And Dr. Martin?
Yes, motion carries. Onto the next one, collecting superintendents.
Administration recommends Innovation High School be closed at the end of the current academic school year. Like many districts across the country, we experience shortages in key instructional positions at some of our sites, Innovation being one. This impacts our ability to maintain the highest level of service. Innovation is currently staffed with several long-term subs, but also several teachers with certifications, but because of the structure of the programming, they may not have the certification in all of the areas. Because of this, we fund a $92,000 contract with Ingenuity to ensure that students have access to online certified staff in core areas like ELA science and math. This increases, of course, our cost to educate those students by $1,756, more per student than in other high schools. The low enrollment of students in the program, which generates, which generates limited ADA or state aid, is also a challenge. We spend more than we receive from the state. Closure would provide academic and extracurricular benefits to students. Innovation's performance metrics also indicates that several of the students are performing in the lower areas of the E O C. Returning to their home schools with the option to apply for one of our choice schools allows us to capitalize on existing certified and non-certified staff in comprehensive high schools, eliminate permanent substitute teacher positions, and ensure all F F S D students have access to D E endorsed curriculum and instruction. This would also expand our access to courses, expand their access to courses and extracurricular activities. Our potential savings would be eliminating four bus routes that cross the district and eliminating unreimbursed van transportation the district provides to in front of internships. We would eliminate the $1.1 million in salaries and benefits for 20-plus staff members of which, I'm sorry, and other non-certified or long-term subs. We want to ensure that all students have access to appropriately certified staff. Closure allows us to dissolve the big-picture learning and Ingenuity contracts, supply costs and utilities at Innovation. All permanent staff will be offered opportunities to apply for vacant positions across the district, and this would save us approximately $1.298,476 million.
Thank you. The administration's recommending Innovation High be closed at the end of the current academic year for savings of $1.98, $2,984,76 million. Is there a motion on the floor? Moved by Tyson. Second by Thurman. We'll start with Dr. Powell Walker this time.
All right, thank you. I think I wanted to just start with a comment. I've had a chance to participate in a couple of the graduations at Innovation, and they've just been so inspirational. And so, I just wanna say that I do think that it's a great program, I do think that students have benefited from it. I just spoke with a woman who, whose son, not her son, her nephew graduated recently from Innovation, and they talked about how he was sort of on the wrong path, and that him going to Innovation made all the difference in the world for him, and he's now thriving in college. And I think that the thing that Innovation offers our students is options, right? You know, it, it offers us the opportunity to support kids who may have different kinds of interests and needs. My hope is that if we do decide to move forward with this closure, that we are thinking about the partnerships that have already been established, and the opportunities that students have to participate in internships and other things that make them ready for the workforce, that we don't lose that. We still have a responsibility to make sure our students graduate college and career-ready. And so, I just wanna mention that my hope is that this is maybe looked at as an opportunity to expand that work in the other high schools. What, you know, there's, I think there's a partnership with Boeing, there's some opportunity for partnership or an expanded partnership with Rankin. I've had a chance to visit with Mr. Bradley, and he's informed me that there are even some certifications that kids are earning in the district that allow them to go straight into the workforce. And so, my hope is that if we move in this direction, that we will find a way to not lose the spirit behind the school, right? That there would still be these options, because the kids that are, that are in that school, we still have those kids here in the district, they still have those needs. And again, it's not just about getting kids ready for college, although many of those kids will choose to go to college, it's also about making sure kids are ready to go into a career. So, I think that's just my, my comment, that if we move in this direction, I really, really feel very strongly that we wanna make sure that we keep those C T E options available for students. Thank you.
And that is a bonus of our comprehensive programs, our comprehensive high schools that we do have. Mr. Johnson back there pushing our, we have Perkins grant funds that provide us a host of opportunities for our children, and so, being on one of those campuses will offer them more of that opportunity. We also, actually earlier today, I spoke with Shanice, I believe her name is Johnson, over at the Boys and Girls Club, they have the SLIP program. And so, that program is related to providing internship opportunities for students. They have lots of connections with several different organizations in the community. It's an eight-week summer program that's specifically based around internships, and then they provide students with additional supports throughout the course of the year. We've also looked at some other programming that is possible, the CAPS program, that could be available for students. Again, once we decide whether or not we wanna go in this direction, then we will explore further.
Thank you for sharing that, and you caused me to think about one more thing. In order for that to happen, there would have to be good oversight in the high schools, right? To make sure that it's carried out in just the way that you described it. And so, one thing that crossed my mind is that for some students who ended up transferring out of their home high school to go to Innovation, there might have even been some behavioral concerns, and the child may have decided to go to Innovation, because that was a better or a different learning environment for them, and they thrived. What I, what I wonder about is how to make sure that we are thinking about those kinds of options when we are dealing with a child with behavioral concerns. In other words, not moving straight to suspension, saying like, hey, what other options, is it possible, right? So, I just mentioned that that's something I hope we can keep sight of, as we're working with students and dealing with those discipline issues that come up, that we know that we have those C T options as an opportunity to maybe reach this kid in a different way. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Graves?
So, I want to first say, through my role here on the board, I had, have always been a strong supporter of the Innovation High School. I think it started off really strong, and I think a lot of students were really interested in that particular model. And so, as we move forward, and if this is the decision of the board, my hope is to be able to sit with this approximately 150 students, to really talk to them about what was missing from their comprehensive schools, and figure out what, what do they need? Is it that, was it that smaller learning community that Innovation brought to them? Was it the being able to have a mentor? Was it being able to have additional options? And so, it is my hope that with those 150 students, that we can sit down with them individually and come up with an individualized plan as they enter their comprehensive schools, because for the most part, those students made a decision to go to Innovation for a particular reason. So, doing an actual assessment with those students to figure out, okay, this is why you chose to go Innovation, and how can we provide those same things to them when they go back to their comprehensive schools?
Sorry. Yes, ma'am. So, we were just here taking notes. Now, we will get together with Mr. Johnson and our college and career readiness coach that serves that campus, and make sure that we survey those 150-plus kids to ensure that we do our best to give them a smooth transition back to their comprehensive high schools if this is approved tonight by the board.
Any other questions, Dr. Graves? Dr. Thurman?
Yeah, I too love the spirit behind the Innovation school model, and I've seen some students who have graduated that I know personally, who've gone through Innovation, and some who are there now, who really love, and their parents who really love that model, because as we know, traditional schools for all students is not, students don't always do well in traditional school settings. So, this Innovation model is wonderful. One thing that I would like to know is how we can, even if we think about having some kind of program in the other schools that looks like this Innovation school model, why it's costing us so much more money per student? And I know that that is an issue, and that's why it's on the cutting block, and for, for parents to understand that, who have sent their kids to Innovation, that is costing us an additional $1,700 more per child to be educated through the Innovation school. So, make sure that the parents also understand why this is one of the, the areas that we feel like may need to be cut.
All right, so, yes, ma'am. So, part of that, of course, with the online platform having to be an option to educate these children, cost us about $92,000. I know that for a fact in my head. Then you also look at the staffing component with having to have five subs, I think, is on the current campus, so you've got five subs there, and so, we know that the subs cost us an additional $250 a day per person, right? And then, you look at the other staff that we have, that I also know we take some hits as far as our certifications, because although they're certified, per se, if it was me, I'm certified in science, but I'm a moderator for English class, I may be great at teaching things, but I don't have the certification. And so, all those costs absorb, and then, when you look at the per pupil expenditure for that particular campus, with enrollment being so low, it just becomes just an option that we need to really strongly consider.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that that's explained to the parents.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, and the students understand it as well.
Yes, ma'am, 100%.
Thank you. Certainly, I know closing schools, especially one that's fairly new, we just had our first graduating class not many years ago, it's, it's hard. You know, one of my concerns is just looking at certified staff, obviously, when we have, I believe the number was one, is that correct, or three? Properly certified?
No, there, there are certified teachers there, but they're not certified in all the areas that they have to teach.
In the areas that they teach.
Based on the, based on the
Gotcha, okay.
The learning model that's provided.
And I know we're part of the Success Ready Network, I believe, Dr. Rose Watson or Mr. Mitch, Mr. Murray, we're working on that as we go through there, and, you know, on my other board, I'm familiar with some of the things that they're doing of, part of our MSB points come from Success Ready Network and real-world apprenticeships, and so, the region's looking at creating some opportunities with internships. I've seen some of our folks at the community colleges that's opened a new nursing and health building, of trying to figure out how we can get students in some of our facilities. We're getting Automotive Center or Advanced Manufacturing Center that's opening brand-new partnership with Boeing's as well, to your point, Dr. Powell Walker. And so, I think, I'm hopeful that we don't lose sight of the opportunity, 'cause as my colleagues have already said, there's a reason why students chose to go there, particularly internships is probably one of them. I think about, you know, my senior year of high school, I did a half-day where I did an internship the second half, and so, there's reasons why people choose to do those things, and so, just making sure that there's no reason all of our kids can't have access to something like that, I think is important, is making sure we don't lose sight of that opportunity. But I think, I will push, I know I heard you say survey, so I'm hoping when you said survey, you meant really talking to them, not just a, a Google survey, 'cause, you know, I wanna really have that dialogue, to Dr. Graves' point of really diving in to figure out what support they may need during this transition time. So, I don't need any response back, but I appreciate the, the thoughts and comments. Ms. Dunn?
Thank you. So, before I ask my questions, I do wanna say that I also have really just loved to see Innovation and the big-picture model. Terry and I, a couple of years ago, had the opportunity to go down to Nashville and, and spend a couple, was it a couple of days? I feel like it was a couple of days. Oh, it was just a day. We spent a day learning from their leader, learning from their kids, and just seeing what big picture can be. This was at the very beginning of our process. This was at the very beginning of our process of, of figuring out what is Innovation going to look like. Um, I, one of the questions I asked also was about the internship opportunities that kids have, but I want to throw out there that within that learning model, and our Innovation experts who are here in the building can obviously, um, correct this, um, it, it's more than just the internship. When we're talking about the way in which kids are, they are working with the content, it is all-encompassing. It is having their, and I, and I can't remember what the semester-long projects are called or the year-long projects, I've had the opportunity to go and see kids present on what they've worked on along with their internship. But it's, it's seeing how all of these, what we say are our gen ed content areas, really relate to the world in which they're a part of, and that they're going to be leaders in, in the future. And so, as we think about, um, how we can have opportunities for kids in our comprehensive high schools that maybe aren't big-picture learning, but mirror some of that, um, I just don't want to lose that piece with the learning itself. Um, I know that we had visions and, and hopes of what we could, where we could be, um, with this learning model. And I don't, if, if this is approved tonight, I don't want those hopes and visions to go away, because there are just some really awesome things happening already, um, at, in our own district and in, in similar schools like what we have here. Um, with that being said, um, one of my questions, I know, Dr. P. Walker, you mentioned that, um, we would, you said something about ending the contract with big-picture learning because there was the school closure. So, my question is, are there any financial legal implications of ending this program because we are under their umbrella?
It's an annual contract. So, we paid for this year and we can non-renew for next year.
Which makes sense when I think about, um, our Innovation kids coming in their droves each year and talking about what Innovation has done. So, thank you for that. Um, I don't think that my other questions have been asked, so, um, thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Tyson?
Well, to echo some of what Julian said, I, we, you know, going to Nashville, uh, saying that, and I, and again, I see the reasons why closing this campus is, is on the table. Um, but I really don't think we should close the big-picture learning approach to our students. Um, we hear, I've heard repeatedly how, um, there's been this sense that we're offering some students something like at Innovation and not offering it to other schools. Well, if, if we close this campus, I would like for us to perhaps explore how, um, you know, big-picture this methodology can be introduced into our home schools, and therefore offering it to all of our students in our home schools that wish to participate in this style of learning, which is different than the traditional style of learning. Again, we talk about being career in, college in, career-ready. Uh, when we went to Nashville, we went to the, uh, radio studio where the, the students were entering. Oh, yeah. When we went to, uh, when we went to Nashville, we went to, to see where the students actually worked. I think it's two days a week they go to a job, uh, and, and a couple of them worked at the radio studio, and they was actually working the radio. I mean, some of our kids are destined to a career and not necessarily college, and I think that we're missing, I don't want to miss, I don't want to, in closing this school, I don't want to close that opportunity to our kids. And again, broadening it to the home schools and incorporating it for perhaps, so kids don't, don't have to apply for Innovation or move to Innovation, it's at, it's offered at their home schools. So, uh, you know, I would personally, I, I, I support, uh, I see the numbers and why we're wanting to close the building, but I, I don't, I don't, I would just be like, I would like to know what the cost would be, uh, to reserving big-picture in that model, um, and incorporating it into our home schools. Um, and again, saving the money in the other areas. I would like to see that number myself.
The cost was sixty, $66,200 for that one space for the 150 kids.
Okay. So, out of the one, 1,067,000 would be subtracted. Okay, all right. Okay. So, those kids would not lose if, if we incorporated that into their home school, I guess what I'm trying to say. Oh, no, I guess it would be more, because then you have to take the staff over there.
Exactly. And I don't want to lose the fact that, I, I don't have my glasses on, but I know you're over there, Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Does a phenomenal job of ensuring that our, yeah, 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 yeah. Of ensuring that our students have access to all kinds of career and technical education programs. I, I think this would be a good opportunity, you want to grab the mic, to get more students and more parents aware about the resources and services that are available to children. Um, because we have it, we have the information in our comprehensive schools, and we have the courses. Teachers are trained to provide those resources to children, and so, it's phenomenal. And I'll reiterate again, because I do federal programs, we receive some federal grant funds that help to, um, ensure that things are moving forward, um, related to our kids just continuing to thrive. So, don't, don't worry. They will, they will get there and they will find out that there are some phenomenal options for them. And as we talk about transition,
Sorry.
As we talk about transition, again, I'm writing all my notes on this page, because you talked about making sure that parents are aware, I agree, that parents need to be aware of what we have. We have to do a better job of branding what we offer. So, ensuring that parents know what's available at our comprehensive schools in the line of CTE.
Thank you. That, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Oh, I think it's important to have education that reflects our students and their interests. Uh, so, I, I'm a big advocate for Innovation. I think that's a big, uh, asset to our school district. I do understand the numbers and everything like that, and I do agree that, you know, when I was in school, we called it COOP. Um, but I do think those programs are very influential and important, and those programs need to stay in our schools. I don't want to berate, uh, more points that have been talked about, but anytime they're closing schools, it's, it's a difficult decision, because you see the students, you understand the staffing, um, you understand the emotional connection that you have. Uh, it's just a hard subject to even talk about right now. Um, but I do understand the numbers, I do understand the reasons why, uh, but we have to keep programs like this, because that's a value added within our district. When I mean, I'm a Ferguson, Florissant kid, that I grew up in this district, I mean that. Programs like COOP, programs like Orchestra, those programs kept people in our community. And we have to do our best to keep programs existing, to keep igniting our community and moving in a positive way.
Thank you. With that, the motion is administration-
Ooh, can I just ask one more question?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm so sorry. Um, I was just wondering, um, just with this, but, I mean, and I know how everybody's truly, um, passionate about this big-picture model and things like that. I am wondering, I know that we did a school within a school, is it possible for that model to, could you do that as well in another high school, like MSB? If you did three programs there? Is that possible?
I think you capture some of that by using your College and Career Readiness Coaches. Um, as Dr. P. Walker mentioned, we've also looked at some more cost-efficient options to provide those internships for these babies. Um, and then I know that one partnership was discussed, it doesn't even exist in the region, and they wanted to partner with us to be able to provide that for our kids. So, I think we'll be able to offer some components of that. Plus, we, we know what we know, right? From the big-picture model, so, although we may not pay the fee to use it, the, the knowledge is here. And so, I think you use all of that, you leverage your relationships, your partnerships within the community, and I believe you should be able to give our babies something comparable to that without the fiscal constraints that we're currently facing it, by having the model within that one particular campus.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes, um, thank you. I was curious, so, if there is the closing of Innovation High School, what is the plan? Um, or is there a plan with Cool Valley?
You know, I work with P. Walker so much, I can read her mind sometimes, and so, what she was about to say is absolutely, uh, we've done some wonderful work at that particular campus in terms of new flooring, uh, HVAC systems, and so, we look forward to making that building a wonderful place for children during the 26, 27th school year. Now, how that building will be structured based on grading, you know, it may be a K-5, it may be a K-8, it may be a pre-K center, we don't know what it will be yet, but absolutely, we're looking forward to maximizing that space.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. With that, the vote is administration recommends Innovation High School be closed at the end of the current academic year, 1.298476 million dollars. Please call for the vote.
Secretary votes yes. Mr. Tyson?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
I'm abstaining.
Uh, Dr. Powell Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Graves?
Yes.
Dr. Thurman?
Yes.
And Dr. Martin?
Yes, motion carries. Next up, uh, is reducing of assistant principal allocation.
Yes, um, and so, I will present this one on behalf of the team. Um, and so, I will be brief in my presentation in terms of this recommendation. Um, when you look at staffing and you look at DESI guidelines, we realize that we have an overage in administrators. Uh, those that have seen me present here recently know I have a gift to lock your numbers in my head. So, when you look at how many people we should have in a buildings, of, if we have 17 buildings, it should be roughly 30.5 people to man those buildings. When we made this initial recommendation of the 18 cuts, we knew that honestly, we probably should have added six additional cuts to this recommendation, but knowing the needs of our kids and the needs of our district, and honestly, just sticking to providing a high-quality instruction to every kid in every neighborhood, got us to that number. And so, the numbers are what they are. You see the savings that could come if this recommendation was approved. Um, and I won't, I mean, it's, it's stated out there, I think it's flushed out pretty clear, you see what the need is based off guidelines. You've heard from some amazing parents, um, Ms. Davis and I have gone back and forth via email. I've, I've been in the school for 13 weeks, I've got relationships with staff, let's just be honest. And so, not my favorite recommendation, but based on the crisis that we're in, this is a recommendation that the board has the option to consider. So, if approved, there are, the number, I'm sorry, would be 1.9 million dollars plus if we were to remove those 18 building administrators from these particular campuses.
Well, thank you so much. Uh, certainly, uh, the board has heard probably the most, uh, about this one, and it's probably because it has the biggest impact on the largest amount of people. Um, and certainly, we know that standards versus, um, actual need sometimes don't align for what we need. And, um, I think, I will say, I'm, as one, I appreciate the co-acting superintendents trying to get to the dollar amount, and I know this was probably one of the hardest ones. There's many hard ones. Um, I know the board's asked lots of questions and emailed to them based on feedback. Um, I don't think we're going to make a motion on this one, and I think we want to give some direction to administration. And as the board disagrees on that direction, please chime in. Uh, at the end of our presentation, we have a savings of going into the fund balance of 1.4 million on top of the 3 million already. If that is the case, I believe it's the board's desire to find, to use that instead of add that to the fund balance, while we're looking at additional vacancies that may come up in assistant principals and/or certification needs, to keep these individuals as allowed based on vacancies and all of that, and certification alignment, to make sure people are aligned to certified positions based on that, and, uh, go through the normal process of attrition if there's people that leave, looking at eliminating some positions there to help get down to that number, but to use that 1.4 million dollars in the fund balance, uh, as a starting point. And then, I assume the board would request that administration then looks at purchase of services and supplies to continue to take money from, or other possible vacancies that may come up. So, there may be teacher vacancies that come up that aren't needed based on enrollments that come through, or whatever the case may be, that are just vacant positions, but looking at other vacant positions that could be eliminated and keeping these in there. I do want to be clear, this is not just my thought, this is, came through the board's discussion potentially. And so, I don't want anyone to think, oh, someone came with this idea, I just have the microphone first. So, um, s- your feedback, I think, is just, this is one example of how advocating to the board makes a difference. Um, I want you to know that we hear you, does not mean we don't have to make difficult decisions, because we just made two difficult decisions, and we have more to make tonight. But I think as we've heard over the course of time, our schools and teachers need some additional support in terms of addressing behaviors and consistency in our schools. And I think there's ways that we could get to a better place of this number, and also, I think the board's desire is to make sure people know whether or not they're going to have a job. And, uh, we've heard over and over from people, um, that the people who are here want to be here. They're not looking to go other places. They would have already looked to go to other places and applied in openings and left. And so, uh, we want to respect those voices, so I don't want to keep talking, but does anyone on the board disagree with that, we don't need to take action on it, because we're just not voting on it, that direction towards administration?
Yes.
Dr., yep, go ahead, anyone? Yep, go ahead and speak.
I just, I just want you to describe the direction that you're giving again.
So, essentially, we would not be approving this 1.9. So, therefore, if you backtrack, there, based on the proposed cuts, there's still money for salary, for increases to non-administrators of 1.9, which we're going to get to at the very end. There's also 1.4 million that was going to be added to the fund balance on top of the 3.8 million. So, instead of adding 1.4 plus 3.8 to the fund balance, we're only going to go with the 3.8, which we originally gave the directive of. Use that 1.4 to cover some of that cost of those assistant principals, and then find additional cost savings through vacancies, retirements that come, open positions, purchase of services, supplies, certification realignment, so if there's assistant principals that are not in the right grade level, that maybe they do have to be moved, because we need people who are certified appropriately, um, in those. So, there may be some that get cut, but it's cut because of vacancies or because they aren't certified in the appropriate grade level. Does that, is anyone opposed to that on the board? We appreciate your hard work in having this. I want to say to Dr. Haywood personally, I appreciate her having these very challenging conversations with administrators, because these are not easy conversations to have. And so, I just want to say, I appreciate her doing that on behalf of the board, because the board gave the directive to our co-acting superintendents, we wanted people to know before it came to the board. And historically, people have not known until after the board meetings, and we wanted people to know, which does create extra anxiety of, is it going to happen? But we wanted people to know upfront. And so, again, we appreciate your hard work in having these challenging conversations, and Dr. Haywood and others, because these are not easy things to face people with. And so, advocacy helps, and I know this is one area that you both have shared throughout this whole process, that it gave you a lot of heartburn, I'll say, because you know our schools need some support. I'm not saying 18 is the right number, there may be some cuts that come that are still down the line. But with that, thank you so much. With that-
So, just, before we move on, just, so just to clarify, these positions as, not just as of right now, these positions are staying, and then if there's anybody who's leaving because they're leaving, I think you used the word, normal attrition.
Attrition, or they're not certified properly, there's no openings, any of those things that happen.
Right, but these are staying. I just, you didn't quite say that, just said, we're not going to vote on it.
Correct. I mean, not all 18 may stay.
Right.
But these individuals tonight are not, they will not be on the RIF list unless there's not certification properly or vacancy, they leave on their own accord.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. Co-acting superintendents, are you both good with that direction?
I don't know what word is better than good, but I'm there. Thank you so much. Uh, thank you all for your comments and your feedback, and we're going to keep swinging.
Thank you, and thank you for those of you who've had stress and anxiety since conversations. Again, we don't know until we begin to take a vote, and so, we, we hear your feedback, and it's hard when you see people. Next up is freezing additional administration building allocations.
Administration is recommending. Thank you.
Administration recommends the freezing of additional central office administrator positions. These freezes are in an effort to align staffing levels with sustainable revenue projections and respond to our stakeholder survey requests to consolidate leadership roles. The estimated cost savings of, I'm not going to put that number there, I'm going to go to this number, seven-hundred-ninety-five-thousand-five-hundred-seven dollars and fifty-two. I'm sorry, nine-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-five-hundred-seven dollars and fifty-two cents related to the following positions. Um, some of these are based on attrition, others are not. So the Director of Operations Facility, um, is resigning and duties will be reassigned to the Executive Director of Operations. Director of Research and Evaluation duties will be absorbed by the Director of Technology. Director, I'm sorry, the Math Coordinator, we currently have two, um, like our Humanities position that is, Coordinator is a K-12 Coordinator position, we will have one Math Coordinator position that will be K-12. Science Coordinator, the current person is resigning, we won't be freezing that position for the time being and looking at other opportunities within our district to provide supports and resources. Again, as long as our federal funds go the way they're supposed to go, um, there will be some Title II-A funds available to support, um, as it relates to professional development for science. We also know that MYSI, or if we should choose to go that route again, um, provide some professional development components for us as well. Um, the next piece is our Director of Early Childhood Special Education. That position would, um, the, I'm sorry, duties would be absorbed by the Director of Early Ed, um, but would also, we're also looking to have a contracted services for some of the additional federal guidelines. Again, that is a grant that is reimbursable, so we want to ensure that, um, the documentation that is necessary through EPEGS and through our federal government are taken care of. Um, the next one is the Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction. That position, um, as again, per our feedback and as well as the fact that we have our curriculum coordinators that will be providing the professional development and ongoing resources and support, uh, that that position would not be, um, would be frozen at this time with the understanding that, um, we would be utilizing the resources and services as we have done in the past. In the past, we have had, um, two directors, actually, we had three initially, but we've had two directors, one for elementary and one for secondary, and their roles included them supervising principals, but also providing additional, um, coordination related to curriculum and instruction. And so we would be looking to, um, utilize some of those resources and services as we move forward. Again, we're going to, um, utilize, as long as things stay the way they're supposed to, our federal dollars to support us in, um, using Title II-A for additional professional development. Uh, the Senior Accountant position is, um... The Senior Accountant position would be one that would be frozen for the time to support the, um, the components of our finance office. And then the last one would be our Director of Student Expectation Code. We would be freezing that position for the time being, utilizing, um, a certified administrator to provide the resources and supports around, um, those supports at this time. So this cost-saving measure is projected to result in a total savings of nine-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-five-hundred-seven dollars and fifty-two cents for the district.
Thank you. The motion is to freeze additional administration building allocations for savings of nine-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-five-hundred-seven dollars and fifty-two cents as presented. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Tyson?
Second.
Second by Thurman. Just so we all are on the same page, freeze means it won't be in the budget, does, when budget and finances maybe reappear, they, those positions can be added back as funds become available for that. Uh, with that, we'll start with Mr. Bailey. Any questions?
I mean, my question is math and science are very important subjects, so I mean, what do we do, what are we doing as far as that goes?
I had it on. So again, as it relates to the math and the math coordinator will be a K-12 coordinator, and I plan to, as long as our funds come in the way they're supposed to, leverage our one percent, which is a mandate of the state, that we utilize our one percent dollars, and, uh, Ms. Rose Watson will be in charge of that, ensuring that we are absolutely, and I did say absolutely, absolutely leveraging the dollars that we have that are specific to professional development for our teachers to receive the training that they need and desire. Um, a professional development survey went out a few weeks back that we are, um, seeking information from our teachers related to what their needs and desires are around math and science and other subject areas. Um, but we also are going to utilize the data, um, to determine what it is that we do in order to provide resources and services. We know these are difficult decisions, but we also know that, um, being specific and targeted around our data and determining where we are and what we need to do to move forward, um, we are going to do our best to ensure that there's training specifically around that. Currently, our, our coordinators are providing that training.
And then as far as the Director of Early Childhood Special Education, what, that's an important position as well.
Correct, and our, um, our Director of Early Childhood Special Education, um, has indicated that earlier I did speak to the fact that, um, the role will be, many of the duties of the role will be encompassed in our Director of Special Education, um, to have some alignment there, but also we would be looking to have a contract for the components that give us reimbursement from the state. And so it is our intent to have a light contract, um, to support us in that work.
And then one of the things in the district we always talk about is facilities and operation. What's our plan on cutting, like, cutting that position, how we, I don't know, redistributing the works and different things like that to ensure that all of our, uh, buildings and everything else like that is maintained?
Wonderful question, but we do have some good people that work here in our district, um, and we have some buildings that need some support and, and resources, but we do have a plan, and actually, when someone asked, I don't know if it was you earlier, but asked about, you know, where we are as it relates to our, um, our plan for our facilities and how we have, um, done what we needed to do and how we move forward, so I wrote myself a note down that we do need to have some type of presentation related to what our plans are for how we move forward, um, period.
And that's one of my biggest concerns among others, is that we had this big manager or, I forgot the name of it, plan, that came up here and gave us all this information, nobody's heard anything from it, but they gave us all information that said that we needed to update certain buildings and have certain codes, and we were in compliance with certain things, but certain things were immediate, more immediate than, than others, and it's just like, you know, not having a plan, a clear plan of how to kind of mediate that. I understand that we've put different parameters in different buildings and stuff like that, but just having a solid plan, I'm just, this is just not easy, and I just, I mean, these positions, all these positions, and I didn't want to just go by one-to-one, I want to say that all these positions are just important to the overall school function. Um, I don't really have nothing else to say.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson.
Uh, one thing in addition I want to add is, as we look at retirees, people transferring, is it possible that we may see some additional freezes in our, in our positions?
Anything is possible.
Yeah, thank you, great answer, thank you.
Ms. Dunn?
Um, I don't have any additional questions, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to the few that I asked about on this, um, you guys did a great job being sure to answer them in your presentation tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. I know certainly, um, these are hard, these are people you probably work with more than other people at central office, which makes it even harder when you're making these decisions, and I'm hopeful that we will be able to unfreeze positions sooner rather than later, and, um, certainly I know that survey data clearly showed that people thought central office administrators needed to be cut, um, and we are going down to a skeleton, skeleton crew certainly at central office, and, um, I appreciate, you know, those who are going to have to pick up other people's work because there's a lot of people who are going to pick up other people's work that they weren't doing before, and so certainly appreciate that as we have to make very challenging decisions, as we see people in front of us who are on this, on this list, but we look at positions and how do we operate as an organization and try to make a decision on the best interest of the district and students. Thank you. Dr. Thurman?
It's been said by just about everyone, it's very difficult to make these kinds of decisions. One of the questions that I do want to ask the, the, um, co-superintendents here, acting superintendents is, did you all look at the Chief of Staff position, and why was that not considered?
To answer the first part of the question, yes, ma'am, absolutely, we did. In full transparency, I mean, I know what that role is, I know the requirements of that role, I know what the, the details of that role includes, that no job description will ever reflect. Um, that person, regardless of who he or she may be, is probably one of the biggest cars on the wheel to keep this thing going.
What other school districts have a Chief of Staff?
I know I've seen one, when we began this originally, we pulled, I think, roughly eleven surrounding this, I think there may be two other ones from our neighboring districts. And with that role, um, we did also add additional, um, workload to that particular role when we organized the org chart in February. So that, that particular role would have some additional responsibilities as well, and, um, yes, ma'am.
Well, when I look at this, and I, I, I'm one of the ones who said, I think someone in the audience said, I wanted to cut as far away from students as possible. We're looking at early childhood, we're looking at math and science, but I don't, but my concern is the Chief of Staff, which is a new position relatively, we've done without before, so why, mhm, we've done without it before, so, and, and this is not about a person, it's about a position, and I have to keep reminding myself of that because I, every one of these people I care about, but I also want to make sure that we're being, that we're really looking, and I know that this is hard work for you all, but as a board member, I have to ask that difficult question. So I, I still do see that maybe, there may be some more other things that we might need to look at before making the, voting on this, this decision.
Dr. Graves?
Um, so I've been kind of vocal in some of these areas, um, and to say that I do want to remind the board that we got this information very late. In addition to this paper that I'm looking at does not even match this paper that's on the screen in regards to, um, one of the positions. Um, and I'm not understanding, like, with how serious this is in a decision and a choice that we made, is it a typo? Um, what happened and how one of these positions is not the same that's on our information that we received, um, this week, Monday, um, well, Tuesday, actually.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
So I want to know which, which one is accurate, um, and I don't even see how, I don't know, I just, I don't understand how that mistake could, could have been made. Um, in addition to, I'm also wondering what does the academics look like now on cabinet? Because the last time we did the organizational chart, we removed academics actually in regards to reporting to the superintendent. And then now we are moving, we're taking away curriculum instruction, we're taking away math coordinator and science coordinator, and we have made strides, I mean, sometimes it seems like we forget that, we have made some reading strides, and so, and in literacy, and we made strides in math, and so, and I know we've talked about science, so I'm not understanding why those academic positions are up, um, when they have been a part of moving our students as well.
Okay, so I'll be fully transparent, and the updated slide deck that you see today is the correct slide deck, the slide deck that was submitted, uh, late, in, in the spirit of honesty as well. This work has been so hard, we've been working on this thing all through spring break and everything else, and so, yes, it was late, we apologize for that, um, but when you impact people's lives, I'd rather be late and right than early and wrong. Um, yesterday, we had a meeting, uh, with several stakeholders who, uh, wanted to review survey feedback and true transparency, and so some roles came up again in that conversation. Uh, it was then determined to make a change, very late, I, I admit, but to make a change to the recommendations to allow, if approved, the superintendent to be more hands-on with the academics, and so, um, for where I come from, the superintendent has to wear every hat, right? And so if that's me, if that's P. Walker, if that's whoever selected in the search or however, we just have to go about the process. Thank you, Holy Spirit. Uh, we are able to be the leader, you're the lead teacher, right? And so you take all the things that made you successful enough to be selected as a superintendent, to put those in your schools, to have those schools run to the best of your academic ability with what you have on the table. And so I take the blame for it being late and incorrect, that's on me. Um, I'm the one who always wants to make sure that we've met with cabinet members, that we've met with the union president, that we've met with campuses, that we've met with parents, um, that's on me. So I'll take that hit, but I also will say that the goal of trying to become fiscally solvent, um, makes us be very patient with some of that decision-making.
Do you have more questions, Dr. Graves?
I don't know, I just don't think that's fair, um, that we didn't have the right, correct information, um, and these are people's lives in different positions, and I, like I said, I still don't understand with the piece in regards to academics, how we are cutting academic pieces when our students need so much.
Yes, ma'am, and I, I'll say, I don't, I don't disagree with you, but I also will say that, you know, as we dig deep into that stakeholder feedback we've gotten, it was specific roles that were identified several times as hot, as hot themes, and so we had to take some of that feedback into consideration when we make these decisions.
Thank you. Dr. Paul Walker?
Um, everything I would have brought up has already been addressed, so thank you, I don't have anything.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey has stepped out for emergency, please. Uh, the motion on the floor was based on current financial situation, stakeholder feedback and survey data, administration recommends we freeze the following central office positions for savings of nine-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-five-hundred-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Please call for the vote.
Okay, I just got a quick question. What if, what if I, um, disagree with the position or two in here? I mean, I feel the sentiments of everyone, but there's, I mean, really back to Courtney's point, you know, the curriculum and instruction, I mean, I get the math coordination, making it K-12, that is a role and a person that's going to be affected, but that, that, um, responsibility is being absorbed by another person, um, but even to, to Courtney's point, what if I feel that I don't, I mean?
Is there one particular?
The, the, the curriculum and instruction. I don't, I don't want, if, if I have to vote with that in here, I would have to vote no.
Anyone else feel that way?
How will that be covered?
That was?
If, if... If if that position is eliminated, frozen, how would that be covered?
Well, so what you would do then, you would then lean on your, your superintendent would be your academic leader. Him or her would be supported by, I believe the current organizational chart reflects an elementary executive director and a secondary executive director, who then would be supported by the coordinators for the specific content areas. And then you you leverage your POCs, your teacher leaders, you leverage your experts to help you kinda absorb some of that that work as well.
Are there other thoughts with Terry's thought?
Yeah, I still have one that I, that the chief of staff that I just?
You'd like to add one, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
There's a motion, so certainly we can either do a friendly amendment to remove one of the positions and vote on the rest and like have administration look at other positions still to come back, which I heard chief of staff from Ms. Dr. Thurman, or you can just keep the motion and vote it down. Which do you prefer? Do you wanna make a friendly amendment? Yes, you were the one who started. Would you like to make a friendly amendment to remove that one position? Okay. Mr. Tyson is making a friendly amendment to remove the executive director of curriculum instruction. Who made the initial motion? You didn't write down, Ms. Dunn? I believe, I know.
No, I did second.
Second? It was Terry. So Terry, do you accept that to amend the motion?
Me?
Yes.
No.
Okay. So what we can do is we can vote on this one. I'm hoping Ms. McWells getting all these notes down for the minutes in there. So the current motion stands, we can make another motion after that, Mr. Mr. Tyson. Does that make sense? Okay, go ahead, call for the vote.
Dr. Thurman? She, Dr. Sheila Powell Walker?
No.
Dr. Graves?
No.
Assistant secretary votes no. Ms. Madam Secretary?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, motion fails. Do you wanna make your friendly, your other motion?
No.
I'll make a motion that we freeze additional building allocations based on stakeholder feedback, survey data and financial situation with the removal of the executive director of curriculum instruction. Is there a second? It's been moved by Tyson?
Second.
Second by Graves.
What was the motion again?
So we're freezing all those, removing the executive director of curriculum instruction on that list. Discussion. Mr. Bailey, just so you know, the motion failed, now we're on a new motion that we would approve these freezes with the exemption of the executive director of curriculum instruction.
So are we adding or we have to come back?
We are just removing and then we can direct through discussion. I've heard already people give administration some additional feedback to go look at other positions. If you wanna make a motion after this, you're more than welcome to make a motion after this. Yes. Any other discussion or questions? Again, the motion is to remove the freeze based on the financial situation with the removal of the executive director of curriculum instruction. Call for the vote.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Assistant Secretary votes yes. Secretary?
Yes.
Dr. Sheila Powell Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Graves?
Yes.
Dr. Thurman? Mr. President?
Yes, motion carries. Would you like to make your motion?
So my motion would be for us to come back or have the co-superintendents go back and relook at this list and possibly add?
To examine the chief of staff?
Chief of staff position, yes.
So the motion is for directing administration to go review if the chief of staff is one of those positions that can be frozen as well. Is there a second?
A second.
Second. Any discussion?
Friend, Mr. Mitchell, I'm sorry, it's late, bear with me. Mr. Mitchell, could, do you mind speaking to a little bit, 'cause you had just shared, you know, 'cause you were chief of staff, do you mind speaking a little bit, just a little bit more detail to me in 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 those present, that role and what, you know, what that role entails and a lot of the things that would be added to that role, the position that role and why it wasn't considered now?
Yes, that's what the motion is, to have them go research that and bring that information back to us to let us know.
Discussion part, okay.
Discussion on the motion.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Is that what you're saying, Dr. Graves, too? Okay. Call for the vote.
Secretary votes yes. Dr. Thurman? Dr. Graves? Dr. Powell Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Tyson? And Dr. Martin?
Yes, motion carries for them to research and bring that information back. So we have some more to go? Let's get to vote, please.
Administration recommends the closure of Oak Elementary and relocating the staff to the administration center on 8855 Dunn Road. This recommendation is based solely on fiscal sustainability, facility conditions and being aligned, I'm sorry, and being in alignment with the district's strategic vision. The building is currently operating below capacity and causes us a fiscal strain, including utility cost to maintain. Along with this recommendation, we would lose a custodian and a security officer that would be absorbed at other campuses based on some of our staffing shortages. The building requires costly upgrades and we've been doing some significant work in terms of trying to enhance academic programs and technology. This consolidation would just provide families with opportunities to to use these services here at the administration building and having access to operation, operating more efficiently, I'm sorry. Cost savings of $176,731.
Administration recommends the closure of Oak Elementary, relocating staff to the administration building at 8855 Dunn Road and to also look at the potential sale of the property to generate additional revenue to support the district fund balance.
So move?
Move by Paul Walker?
Second.
Second by Graves. We'll start with Paul Walker this time. Any questions?
No.
Thank you. Dr. Graves?
No.
Thank you. Dr. Thurman? Mine only is if you can work with our attorneys to bring the resolution and identify that surplus property so we can try and get it for sale if this motion passes tonight sooner rather than later to try and get some additional revenue in the district. Ms. Dunn? Mr. Tyson?
Yes, just curious to know, since we're potentially selling, have we looked at the appraised value?
I have, I have not, I have had some preliminary discussions with Mr. O'Neil in terms of it being identified as a historic property, so there may be some complications in terms of that. Yes, sir.
Thank you. It's for sale for $5 to Mr. Tyson, just kidding, that's not public. Mr. Ty, Mr. Bailey?
No, it's just more of a comment. I appreciate that families will not be able to come to the administrative center to handle what they need to handle. That's a wonderful thing.
Thank you for that. Please call for the vote.
Dr. Powell Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Graves?
Yes.
Dr. Thurman?
Yes.
Secretary votes yes. Mr. Tyson? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
And Dr. Martin?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is restoration and wellness restructuring. Are you all ready? Okay.
Yes, sorry, we're comparing notes. So the administration is recommending restructuring the Mark Twain Restoration and Wellness Center. The goal of this, to get to this $592,000 includes losing the existing utilities for the building, reducing bus routes, and then there will be some staffing loss with this move as well in terms of subs, a college and career readiness specialist, custodian and a counselor. We are proposing that our students assigned through our DEC committee will now move to a wing within the Wedgewood sixth grade center and that our credit recovery students will be served into a space design within the STEAM high school. The cost savings of making this move would be $592,780, I'm sorry, $592,785.14 and we also will be looking to surplus that building to add funds to the fund balance.
Thank you. So the motion is administration is recommending the Mark Twain Restoration and Wellness Center be restructured as well as list the property as surplus for sale for additional revenue as well. Is there anyone who wants to?
So move.
It's been moved by Dunn, second by Thurman. We'll start with, I guess, myself in the middle and then we'll go back that way. Certainly, I appreciate it. I know some questions have just come up of, is it possible to have them come here instead of somewhere else to look at administration reduction instead of having two sites? I know buses is one of the reasons why, and food service was the other, but from my understanding, food was brought in to there, so could it be brought in here and just, I know there's still buses, but then if you're having one site, could you reduce administration there potentially if needing, not needing as much, I know we're not, you're just restructuring it, so you're not getting into all those details, but just curious if you had it here instead of two sites, could that help reduce some of those administrator needs?
It could, but in initial conversations, I think we've had a meeting, it may have at the third meeting yesterday in which we identified that one issue we would have is that we don't have a relationship with the Hazelwood Police Department. And so that would not be able, we would have to, I guess, negotiate that, which would be additional costs to have an officer on site to support the campus. And then the budget cuts, we cut a security officer and SRO from Wedgewood. And so by doing this, it would allow us to then place an SRO and a security guard back at Wedgewood, put them in a specific portion of the building, which is, I guess, kinda why we made it a two-part recommendation because there was no consistent way to pick that space up and relocate it somewhere else.
With that, I just, is there a way to still move the SRO to Wedgewood and just bring the security officer here and not have an SRO here if we decided, if if it was to move both those here? So you're still having the SRO be utilizing to save money for Wedgewood and having a security officer here with them?
Yes, but you wouldn't have anybody, any relationship in place here to support the campus. If it were, if it were to be moved here, there'd be no?
Are none of our other schools in Hazelwood at all?
No, sir.
This is the only location that's in Hazelwood?
Yes, sir.
Police, got it, that's what makes it complicated, got it. All right, Ms. Dunn?
I only have one question. So relocating the students assigned through DEC to Wedgewood, how is that going to impact both the high school students who'll be over there or middle school, but our students who'll be over there and the sixth graders who are already in the building?
Yes, ma'am. So when we look at that, we identify some space that that we can provide for students to be in, I don't, I don't, to be in a space conducive for the learning environment there. The concern presented to the committee yesterday was if I, if I have a kid, and again, it's about providing the proper support, right? And so if I've got a kid who thrives in an environment that's conducive for their learning style, then putting them back in that same environment is not giving the kid what they need. And so if I've got a baby who struggles with a large comprehensive high school and he or she is going to this model strictly to be able to graduate, I also wanna shout them out for providing a 20% of our graduation rate through the Restoration and Wellness program. But when you take those babies out of those spaces they struggled in and then to go back and put them in them spaces, we just didn't feel like that would be a good recommendation to support that group of kids. So I know that we provide interventions, I'm sorry, and resources for every particular type of kids, which is our way of trying to support these kids as well.
Mr. Tyson? Mr. Bailey?
No questions.
Dr. Powell Walker?
So I know that there are some social emotional supports that these students have in place at the Restoration and Wellness Center. Are those supports gonna go with the students to where they're going?
Yes, ma'am, you're talking about in terms of KVC?
Say it again?
KVC, the MTSS support those kids get for the circles they have, the restorative conversations and whatnot.
Okay, so that's gonna go with them, but now the credit recovery students also had access to that and now they won't. So how will they get that support? Will they just be supported by the staff at STEAM High?
Yes, ma'am. So part of the discussions we had in the STEAM merger were not impacting the counselor from the middle school and the two that are already currently there, those people will be able to provide support. And then you'd have an administrator and then you'd have those teachers to provide support for those children as well. So the components of the program kinda would be a school within a school model as well. So it would follow both campuses, but it would be more in-depth to a certain extent to support the children who've been recommended by DEC.
Okay, and then this is more just a sort of a question about the philosophy behind the program itself. There are some programs like this where students go, they, you know, work on certain skills that they need to build and then there is the opportunity for them to return to their home school. And you were saying that, you know, you wanna create a space where kids can just stay, like it didn't work for them to be in another environment, so we're gonna keep them there. So I guess I'm trying to understand, do we have opportunities for kids to return to their home school? Because while I recognize that there are some kids for whom staying in this space might be best, there are some kids who could probably transition back. And the reason I mention that is because, you know, we're preparing kids to go out and live in the real world, right? So sometimes, you know, kids need the opportunity to go back so that they can, you know, they've learned their lesson. So is that, do we mostly just place kids there and leave them there or or is there an opportunity for kids to work their way back into their home school?
So it's a two-part answer I'm gonna give you and if I mess it up, we can just let me know. I know in terms of the credit recovery, those are babies we identify early in the school year through the councils and the senior assistant principals to say, hey, Brent has X amount of credits and he's going to be impacted, he's going to impact the cohort. And so if we allow him to enroll in maybe mocap or credit recovery in a smaller environment with more intentional support, he'll be able to graduate with his cohort. In terms of the babies who have been assigned via DEC, that assignment is always tied to a specific number of days. And so once that assignment has been honored, he or she has the opportunity to return to their home campus. Or in some instances, they do reassignment links from the parents for that child to stay in that program, which you look at space, you look at opportunities and you have those conversations with that staff to see if that's an option you can provide for the child.
Okay, so will the staffing be impacted here?
You'll, you'll have a little bit of impact in terms of, I know we have one program that has five subs specifically and so that program will be impacted. You also will have an impact with a middle school counselor, I believe, and then some supports, I'm sorry, and a college and career readiness specialist will be impacted by this move as well and then a custodian.
So then if they move to Wedgewood, they don't have access to anybody to support them with college and career readiness or?
That, well, the, the college and career readiness piece would impact the high school children that are going to STEAM, so that person would just absorb those responsibilities there.
Okay, so there's two different age groups there, right?
Yes, ma'am.
This is the middle school.
This is, well, the, the Wedgewood component would be the middle school and the high school kids who have been assigned to it.
Right, so what I'm trying to figure out is?
Got it, got it, got it, got it.
How are those kids going to still have access to college and career readiness? Are we anticipating they're gonna go for a short time and then head back to their home school so it won't be as big of an impact or?
Ideally, but we still can provide that support for those group of kids that impacts. Just depending on honestly when they're assigned, they may have already gotten that before they got there, or we need to set that up when they return, but we'll work with Mr. Johnson and his team to ensure those kids get what they need. get what they need.
Okay, and then I just want to note, since we're on the subject, that that's a group of students, again, when we think about the programming that's available currently at Innovation?
Yes, ma'am.
And that being an option?
Yes, ma'am.
I just, you know, sometimes within that group of kids, you could have a kid or two who might benefit from that, so...
And honestly, they've built relationships to where they have kids that's impacted by that, and so they use their online platform to support those kids, and may have to work to provide support for their family outside the school as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Graves.
I do have, I really have some concerns about Restoration moving to Wedgwood. I can just recall several times we have gotten emails in regards to just some of the activity that goes on at Restoration, and we're going to have these with our sixth grade students and then the other middle school students. It just seems like it's just too close, where other schools can be impacted by maybe some of the things that could occur with, with the activity I know that we've seen in the past with Restoration, I just want to say that. The other thing is, I lost my train of thought with that one. I mean, no, I mean, that's the thing. I really feel like them being over here, they have, when you think about putting people in a different environment, everybody knows how nice this school is, this environment is, and for some of our students who are proven to be very challenging, sometimes an environment can just change them. And I just wonder what that can look like. The other thing is the numbers. How many students are we really talking about in regards to what this can possibly, what this is going to hold? And the whole transportation piece, like, are they still going to ride transportation with schools, with students that are not in Mark Twain, or do they get their separate bus? Because then it can go back to having maybe altercations with some of the students that they have been separated from. So I just think, Mark Twain, that just needs to have been closed regardless, but I think we need to rethink about where we want to provide that high-level service that is needed for those students.
Okay, I want to make sure I captured everything you asked. I know we talked about numbers, environment, bus routes, and location. Okay. In terms of numbers, I know they've graduated about a hundred, and I'm glad y'all are back there, so correct me if I'm wrong, you've graduated about 125 kids so far this year. That number fluctuates because once those kids are in and graduate, they leave the program.
Just for clarity, are you talking about DEC ones or credit recovery? Just so we can separate the numbers.
It could be a little bit of both, but the majority are credit recovery kids. Right, and so the DEC kids are about 49 per session. They're second ahead, yes, so about 49 per session. So when we run this program currently, you're running a bus route four times because you have AM drop-off, AM pickup, PM drop-off, PM pickup. And so if you route that here, then coming from both sides of the district, there'll be some additional costs in terms of the bus routes, and then again, with the police department relationship to support some of those items that you mentioned that have happened in the past, that we'd have to look at to establish and potentially absorb more costs to add that relationship with the Hazelwood Police Department. And environment, we agree, that came up in the conversation, and so a lot of the babies they support right now are overstimulated, so putting them in a smaller environment, we felt would be in their best interest to provide them what they need.
Thank you. Dr. Thurman?
Yeah, I'm concerned about putting kids from Restoration with sixth graders.
Sorry, I meant to say that too, I'm sorry. And so there are currently some sixth graders who are in the program at Restoration Wellness as it exists right now?
Some. So...
You've got middle school and high school kids in the program, in the DEC version of the program. They've been assigned from sixth through 12th grade.
But would the sixth grade students be riding the same bus with students from Restoration?
The sixth grade students from, from Restoration? They currently ride the same bus together right now?
No, Wedgwood.
No, no, ma'am, no.
So they would not ride the same?
They would ride, the, the way the program is structured, the DEC kids would ride, because they don't live in the Wedgwood zone, they come from everywhere. So some may, most wouldn't. And then in terms of the credit recovery portion, those kids would probably ride, I think we captured them riding the bus with the STEAM kid, but those kids are so focused on graduating, they don't really have many behavior challenges for the credit recovery kids, the older kids, the...
Say that again, the older kids from...
The older kids don't normally have behavior, those are the kids who are focused on graduating and getting out of school.
For STEAM?
For STEAM, right.
Okay, but I'm talking particularly about...
The DEC version, those kids would have to be routed from throughout the district, similar to how they're routed now.
Right, and so what I'm saying is, so would they be riding the bus with anyone else, like from, from the sixth grade center? You're saying no?
No.
Okay, so, but they would be in the building with the sixth graders from all over?
Yes, yes, ma'am, yes, yes. But they'd be, they would be in a specific wing of that, because that building currently can hold 756 kids. We only have, I think, 274 there now.
You like that, babe?
No, I didn't know.
Oh, yes, ma'am, yeah, 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 yeah. So if you look at how, when we, when Terry provided the map yesterday, I want to say there's like four wings of the building, five wings of the building. And so when you look at how that building's created, if you come in and go immediately to the right, you've got access to eight classrooms that we could separate from the original campus. Yes, ma'am, yes, sir, I'm sorry, yes.
Does that answer everyone's question? Mr. Bailey?
No, but one comment, because we talked about the building, that building is by a major street, so we really need to kind of take into consideration like security and eloping and different things like that.
Correct, which came up yesterday, which is why we were excited about providing them with the SRO and the security guard to go with them from Mark Twain to that campus.
Thank you for your consideration, because you can dip off and go in the neighborhood very quickly.
Which is why we didn't put it on that left side of the map, because it was right there by the neighborhood. This portion that we're recommending to put those babies in would be right in the front of the school to the far right.
Okay, wait, yeah.
I have one follow-up question, just after you described the way that Wedgwood was, and I apologize in advance if you've already answered this. So if there is the space available already at Wedgwood, is there a reason why we're not looking to essentially just move the program fully over to Wedgwood into those wings?
Yes, ma'am, we talked about that, and would, once you take away that one wing, they've got to allocate eight classrooms within the rest of the wings of the building. And so logistically, it just wouldn't make sense, because you'll need to add an additional four if you bring the credit recovery portion over, so we couldn't identify 12 spaces at Wedgwood that we could successfully make the transition, based on how it's laid out.
So based on how it's laid out, there's just not the space for it?
Every pod has roughly eight classrooms and two offices in it, and so you need 12 classrooms and potentially two to three more offices, so it just didn't make logistical sense.
Okay. I just want to add one more thing. Again, I've said already, my time is limited here, so just to say this now, to Courtney's point of the space that we have here, I hear that there's some potential issues when we're talking about not having that relationship with the Hazelwood PD, and I know that there's also a cost associated with that, when we do have, we've had that conversation over the years. But just thinking about how we might be able to do that, I'm sure that you already have long-term plans, or not plans, but long-term ideas of how we might be able to utilize this space, but this is already a great secondary space that's set up. So to be able to bring all of our Restoration and Wellness scholars over here, I think that it's a name that suits the space versus where they are now. So just long-term, to figure out what would it look like for us to form that relationship? I realize there's a cost associated as well with bringing in food services into a building, that there is nothing here already in other pieces too, but just how can we begin to think about making that happen? I think this is a good stopgap measure right now for where they're going to be placed, but what can we do here?
Thank you. Dr. Thurman?
Yeah, I kind of wanted to echo the same thing, and I forgot to say that when I was making my comments, but having students over, over here may give them a sense of pride, and may even change the way they might, you know, see schooling and behave and all that. But the other, the other issue, oh, gosh, that just went right over my head. Yeah, that part. Okay, go on.
So I'm, what I'm hearing is people understand that this is probably a one-year fix as the district looks at longer-term closure of, of schools, that there's a desire of the board to really explore that this space possibly be used for Mark Twain as well as other programming across the district. But for one year as a stopgap, I heard, it makes sense, but long-term, we would like to see something as we plan for the future. Does that seem reasonable, Board? What we're hearing?
I think it does. We don't have our accountability sheet any longer, but if we did, that'd be top of the list.
Mr. Bailey?
And that just sparked another thought. I really would like to see kind of how we can utilize this building more, you know, figure out programs, figure out, you know, adult literacy and different things like that. I also want to figure out like things like the annex to other buildings that we have, and how we can leverage those and utilize those as buildings, because we have a lot of building space that we're not utilizing, and I really want to see more programs into those spaces, inviting non-for-profits into those spaces, providing wraparound services in those spaces that we have.
Yes, sir, and I know now that the vote transition has been approved, we have had some talks about potentially trying to put an early childhood center here, since it would not require transportation for pre-K kids, and then putting, Dr. Shaw has already kind of looked at doing some playground grants for us to build these children an amazing space to play on the property. Terry said he can put a fence up fairly cheap, and then we make this space an early childhood center, maybe close some other spaces and combine those classrooms with other campuses to maximize space there as well. So we've had some, you know, long-term thoughts about what this could be. We agree it needs to be a space for children, but we haven't quite captured what that would be. In this short turnaround, but for 26, 27, absolutely, it'll be some type of space for kids.
Stopgap for one year, were you saying bringing Restoration over here for one year?
Ms. Dunn said stopgap.
Would that, is that what you, is that what you were asking about? Yeah. Bringing Restoration over here for one year?
No, no, no. This current, the current plan that's in front of us, this just being a stopgap for one year, but we need to be thinking long-term about how to make a space that is suitable for our students that are at Restoration Wellness, because Mark Twain isn't it? Being in a building, a sixth grade center, isn't it? Being spread out amongst everywhere, isn't it? A nice, beautiful space would be perfect for them.
I agree.
Also, if you guys can work with attorneys to get a resolution to denote that as surplus, that would be appreciated. With that, call for the vote.
Dr. Graves?
No.
Dr. Thurman?
Yes.
Secretary votes yes. Mr. Tyson?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Dr. Powell Walker?
Yes.
And Dr. Martin?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is eliminate the 13 high flex positions.
Administration recommends eliminating the 13 high flex positions.
Can you just remind the Board what these positions are, just briefly, what they were created during COVID time and all that stuff?
They were created during that timeframe. It's an instructional model that allows a certified FFSD teacher to teach two classrooms at one time via video along with a facilitator and another space.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the elimination of the 13 high flex positions?
So moved.
Moved by Powell Walker, second by Tyson. Do I need to go through the whole line, or are there any questions? We'll start with Mr. Bailey, any questions?
Was any of these, oh, it's, never mind, because that question is, well, maybe I can answer, and you tell me if I can't ask it. Were any of these teachers certified? No?
No, that's mine, not to know.
Okay.
Mr. Tyson? Ms. Dunn? Dr. Martin has none. And Dr. Graves?
What was, what was this position, what were they for again?
There was a shortage of teachers in core areas, and so to ensure that our students received high-quality education in math, et cetera, we made sure that a certified teacher provided the, I'm sorry, a certified teacher provided the online supports for the students. So the certified teacher may have been in one room, and there may have been a high flex teacher, which could be someone with 60 credit hours that managed the other classroom, but the student received the direct instruction from a certified teacher.
So are we losing 13 teachers then?
Subs, subs. It is our hope to fill, you're correct, non-certified staff or the high flex facilitators.
And so these positions that they were covering, what happens to those?
So it is our hope to ensure that students have a certified teacher in front of them.
And if they don't?
If they don't have a certified teacher in front of them, then of course, we will have to fill those positions with subs, but that is not our hope. We have budgeted for actual teachers to be in front of students.
And if we can't find these teachers, we're going to have to use subs?
But they're not teaching right now, they're just facilitating.
That's what they're doing.
So they're not even responsible for lesson planning or actually executing the lesson?
So then this 562 might turn into 562 for subs?
This is the savings for not having the high flex.
Right, but we still need these teachers, we need somebody, right?
Correct, so the budget is for a certified teacher. We have budgeted for certified teachers to fill those positions.
And so that's already in the budget?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Dr. Powell Walker?
Thank you. So I wanted to ask if these are the positions that get utilized when, in the past, there's been a discipline concern, serious enough with a student, that has come to a hearing, and the decision's been made that the child will be virtual for the remainder of the year? So I'm curious to know if these positions were supporting those kids, or is that something different?
No, ma'am, I don't believe so. That support's provided through the Restoration and Wellness Center.
Okay, all right.
I'm looking at Jane, she's, no, these two don't interact, so no, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, that's my only question.
With that, call for the vote.
Dr. Thurman?
She's not here.
Oh. Secretary votes yes. Mr. Tyson?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Dr. Powell Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Graves?
Yes.
And Dr. Martin?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is eliminate the pull-out music classes. In order to save time, the Board, I think, has a similar sentiment to the assistant principals on this one, and would like the administration to find money to cover this cost through other means instead of eliminating those positions. Just want to confirm that the Board thinks that and is good with that. Are you all good with that down here? Thank you so much for staying so late to hear that. Again, apologize for the anxiety and stress. We appreciate hearing from your kids as well, and certainly advocating for fine arts, and I think the Board does value fine arts and does have to make tough decisions, but certainly we will look at this and see where holes can be filled and how to be more efficient while still offering programming. So again, looking at how to be efficient and effective with that. So that we will need to cut elsewhere. Again, as a reminder, we look at supplies. So just so, I know Dana, just as I know you'll get teachers hearing things, we're going to have to be cutting from supplies and purchases of services at some point, so I know we can't have people in every supply we need, so there might be cuts that come to schools and just thinking, how do we use title money and grants and other things to get some of our supplies to make up for some of these costs? So just want to be transparent that this does come at a cost of finding the money elsewhere, because our plan is still to give $1.9 million in raises, which includes benefits, to non-administrators for negotiations is kind of our dollar amount we're starting with. Okay, next up.
Administration recommends eliminating the 14 attendance secretaries. These positions were created two years ago, I believe, and as it relates to the cost savings of this, it's $542,150.94. The, as it relates to the attendance component, this position was under the director, executive director of research and evaluation, and the purpose of it was to ensure and/or increase attendance rates. And we have had limited impact on that particular piece, and as you know, from much of our conversations related to the budget, our ADA is based on attendance. And so I'm going to just say again that when students are not in your classroom, we want to make sure that we reach out, so that they are here and getting the lovely instruction that you are providing.
Thank you. Administration recommends eliminating the 14 attendance secretaries for savings of $542,150.94. Is there a motion? Moved by Thurman?
Second.
Second by Powell Walker. We'll start with Mr. Bailey, any questions?
So originally, the reason why we staffed these positions was to increase... was to increase ADA and different things like that. So we haven't seen too much impact with that?
We have not seen the level of impact in order to continue with the programming.
And then my next question is, a reason why we brought them in too, was to help out with the new system. We were having so many challenges with the system. So where does that lay it now?
In terms of infinite campus. Yes, sir. We've... I won't say we've mastered infinite campus. We've become a little bit more efficient in it. But still, even with this transition, there's just no impact that we're seeing from adding those roles. Because we added additional roles last year, I believe, to other campuses to try to capture some additional attendance, and we did not see that impact.
Excuse me. My last statement is, a lot of the complaints I heard from the community is when they're trying to get in contact with their children, and they call the secretary, saying stuff like that, they can't. So by reducing that, that creates a different barrier that I think we need to look at as far as if we're telling the kids that they can't bring their cell phones and different things like that. The lines need to be open, but a lot of times, I mean, I've called myself, and the lines have been busy. Also, we have to kind of look in there. If we're gonna decrease that, that's the thing that I think we need to kind of, you know, keep on our radar as well.
Thank you. Mr. Tyson?
Well, no, this is just a comment. I know that one of the issues that we were having with attendance was the reporting of the attendance. Has that been improved?
You're talking about, I believe, I want to make sure I'm right on this. You're talking about in terms of single-period... Single-period absences being properly coded so that we're able to get some of the ADA. That is still an issue that we're facing.
Microphone, please.
These positions really don't have an impact on that. It's just we have to improve.
I wouldn't say they don't have an impact. We're just not seeing a significant impact to justify the positions.
Thank you. Ms. Dunn?
So I just want to clarify that the 14 positions that we're looking to potentially eliminate are the 14 that were added a couple of years ago. This is no increase. And the reason, I want to be clear why I'm asking this. When I take a look at our personnel document that we received, there was a hire date that was well before two years ago on there. And so that just, it kind of stood out to me as being a little wonky. So just that could be clarified, please.
I'm gonna do my best. I believe that would indicate that those people served in other roles before they went to that position. So if I were as a ninth-grade OP, and then these roles were created two years ago, and I applied for that role and received it, then based on longevity and all that type of stuff, you'll still be able to be afforded, we believe, other positions within the district based off of attrition, non-renewals, and retirements.
Okay.
So some people, I know in your report shows they qualify for longevity. Some of those people, that would apply to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I, again, I know we added these two years. And just to clarify, I guess, it will just go back to the school attendance, people entering the attendance, making sure teachers are entering it and grade level. There's still people that do the work. It's just, we've not seen $542,000 reaped back in ADA to justify these positions.
Correct. And one of the other pieces that we have put in place through Title I is social workers in many of our schools. And part of their accountability measure is to increase attendance, mainly through parental engagement components, so that the parents understand how important it is for their children to be here at school and providing them with the resources and wraparound services throughout the community in order to support that.
Thank you. Dr. Thurman? Dr. Graves?
Did we evaluate what went wrong just with that? I just was wondering, because we put this thing in place. We said it wasn't effective, but did we actually figure out what was the piece that's not effective? Especially if we're still having this challenge?
To answer the first part of the question, I don't believe we evaluated it as if like a program evaluation or the... I think the... I think we looked at the data to make this particular decision. And so by seeing that the increase was not there, was how we came to this particular decision. And then, I mean, you can look at, by campus, it could be specifically tied to performance of a particular employee. It could be tied to just some of that just not being captured accurately. It could also be tied to just, could this be absorbed in a different way? And so, yes. And it's also, when you look at your DESI Recommended Standards and Guidelines, we're also way over in this particular line as well.
Well, I mean, I'm fine with it. I'm just, my whole concern is if we haven't found what the problem is, even removing them, we're still not getting our goal to ensure and increase attendance.
Right.
So I'm just like, okay, if they didn't work out, okay, well, what is it about this particular role didn't work out? Is it the system that we have set up where it's not working out? Because as we are cutting funds, we also need to talk about how we're gonna increase revenue.
Right.
And this is one of those line items where we know our biggest buck bang is right here. So we're removing it, but if it didn't work, what made it ineffective? And then what are we gonna do so we can make sure that whatever this looks like moving forward, when we basically take away that role of responsibility, that we don't totally lose attendance?
Thank you.
The only thing I would probably add is just that if these positions are eliminated, I think there needs to be some sort of a robust plan put in place in each of the buildings around attendance monitoring. The social workers are good, but of course, we know, as I think has already been alluded to, attendance is everybody's responsibility. And so I'm hoping, because, and I'm just speaking, having been a social worker before, it's great to have a social worker, but this is a lift. If, you know what I mean? If you only have a social worker monitoring this. So my hope is that there is gonna be some understanding by the building principals and the team there, that we all have to figure out what the issues are around school attendance and figure out how to get after it. So that's all I have.
Thank you so much. With that, please call for the vote. Mr. Tyson, if you can wait one second for the vote. Go ahead.
Secretary votes yes. Mr. Tyson?
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
And Dr. Powell Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Graves?
Yes.
And Dr. Thurman?
Yes.
And Dr. Martin?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is just the cost savings recommendation. And again, that will be adjusted due to the Board's action of not the travel music program and Assistant Principals. After that is additional savings that the administration's cutting that does not need Board action. They've already cut this. We can see it on there. Yonder Bags, clary.gov, Thought Exchange, Let's Talk Program, which I think someone spoke about earlier, that will be cut. Synthegix negotiated our lighting contract, our airmark decrease, reducing twists and reimbursement, moving to credit recovery for summer school, as well as reducing spending for agencies of nurses. Any questions about those?
Yes, I do have a question.
Yes.
We kept talking about the nurses thing, and I want to make sure, have we settled that? We said that, you know, we were outsourcing that, but then we said that it would actually save money if they became a part of our district. So have we kind of settled that? Or what is that gonna look like? Is that something that needs, again, to stay in the forefront of our schools and how we think?
So we are aware that we... That our Emergus contract, nursing contract, is quite expensive. They pay the nurses more. They... And we do not. And so when we have asked, after they've done a period of time, they have to do so much time with the company. And then after that time, we can ask whether or not they would like to come on with us. And in many instances, they do not wish to do that because they make more money through the contract. But of course, as you know, the contract is costing us two to one. Costs us twice the amount of money that it does for us. Is it three now? Three to one, as it relates to what it would cost us to hire a nurse, they're charging more than that. And they're also paying them more than that. And so what we look, what we have been looking at for next year is that the registered nurses, LPNs, and aides that we do currently have in our district, that they could possibly be split and utilized at the buildings. We did save some funds in the budget, set aside for the contract with the hope that we would be able to, again, it would not be, it is not optimal. We would not be able to have full-time nurses in buildings if we utilize the staff that we currently have. But that would give us, and we talked about looking at the needs, you know, what the needs are of students so that we can actually make sure that we plan accordingly. Again, not optimal, but that is sort of where we are right now. And looking at what the recruitment of nurses could possibly be under our circumstances.
And my next comment is, you know, is we're a school district of 97% or 95%, I think, African-American. And we know that we suffer from chronic diseases like diabetes and different things like that to ensure that our kids get the proper treatment that they need. But another thing that I would really like to explore is, we have all these partnerships that are Phenia, Mercy Hospital, Mercy Clinics, and all those different things. It's really time to put a couple clinics in our schools that are not being utilized, our buildings that are not being utilized. Exploring those opportunities of creating clinics, because a lot of our stakeholders, both external, internal, use our nurses as triads. One specific example is when I was working in the schools, a parent literally told their kid to come to school to get treated, and he was, he found out it was a broken leg. You know, and those are things that we need to make sure. And I know those things are happening in school. So we need to make sure that we have something in place as far as clinics and different things like that to help encourage it. Or even talk about safe eating and different things like diabetes and different things that our kids historically suffer from, asthma and those type of things as well.
Thank you. Any other questions on these ones? Dr. Powell Walker?
Sure, thanks. I wanted to ask if the credit recovery, summer school-only line item, I wanted to understand that. Does that mean we would only do credit recovery? What we offer in the summer would no longer be available? Is that what that is?
Yes, ma'am. That number indicates how much we spent last year for summer school and how much we had in the budget for summer school for this year.
Okay. And then I know that, having dealt with this with my own kids, sometimes there's other options. Like I think Blue Springs has an online program. So I mean, are we gonna... I guess I'm wondering, are we still gonna provide some guidance and support to kids who need the credit recovery? We may not be offering it personally, but we can certainly inform them about opportunities in the community.
We are offering the credit recovery for seniors that need it for graduation.
Okay. So it's just, it would only be for seniors?
Correct.
And then the other thing I wanted to ask about is the yonder bags. I know one teacher got up and, or sent in a... Somebody mentioned that about, you know, how it had improved things.
Three of them.
Yeah, we've heard both sides of it, right? Some people afford, some people think it's a waste of money. But I know that in some school communities, they have adopted a policy around cell phones in the schools and just making it clear that cell phones are not to be visible during the school day and tying consequences to that. I know that's much easier than it sounds, right? But I still, I guess, I guess if we move away from yonder bags, I would just want to make sure that we're not sending a message that we no longer, you know, like we would be going totally back in the other direction. I still think having the cell phones with students during the school day creates a huge distraction. I just know personally that, you know, in some instances, we see conflicts where students go down, and kids can focus more on learning, and they don't have as many peer conflicts because they're not sending all these texts and getting into drama during the school day. So I guess I mentioned, we may end up not having yonder bags, but I would like to hear what the plan is gonna be around. I mean, most of us by now have probably heard of or read The Anxious Generation. So we already know that the access our kids have to technology is not necessarily good for them, and we know it impacts them during the school day. So I would really like to see us just look more closely at how we're gonna, you know, what is gonna be the alternative plan if we don't have that?
Yes, sir. And I do want to talk real quick about policy. I know in our policy work that we've been doing, cell phones aren't allowed in school or to be visible or used. I think it's just the enforcement of it. So I think even our new policies, to your point, it is in there still. Just the yonder bag was like an additional add, a tool. A tool, that's a great way of doing it.
Yeah, I just don't want to go backwards, I guess.
Right. And we still have tons of yonder bags on campuses currently. And we've also got a pilot program at McClure High that may work for the district. It's a little less expensive. And then schools, I believe, also will have the option to purchase yonder bags in their budget if they have that flexibility. But that may change based on some of the decisions from tonight as well.
I guess with that, with those schools that are really seeing success, let's send the yonder bags over to those schools and have them use it, since we've already paid for the yonder bags, right? Because it seems like STEAM was one school that we heard from all three teachers. And if they, that's really working there, why not utilize all the yonder bags? Where you look at, I think, another school, I won't say a name. They struggle to utilize them as best they can. So let's not waste the resources there and keep charging kids to get new yonder bags. Let's use them where, because again, it's a tool. It's not a policy. It's a tool. Great, great. Any... Dr. Graves?
I think for me, just talking about the yonder bags, it's... If we look at what other districts are starting to do, many of them are starting to go to yonder bags. And so I'm just wondering, did we go too restrictive too fast, right? Did we basically put something in place where we set everybody up to fail? Do we need to relook at maybe how we... Do they need a set time where during this particular times, they cannot use their phones? They have to be in yonder bags? But then they can unlock their phones at lunchtime, and then they have to put them back up? I just think that before we basically quit cold turkey, it didn't work. Where are the numbers that say that didn't work? What does that evaluation look like? Because we did invest in this. We did spend money on this. And some people did say it worked, some people did it. But those who didn't make it work, were there other things that caused it not to work? And then my whole thing, the other thing is about the Synthegix. We just got Synthegix, and we're still having shortages in our safety and security department. Have we spoken with them to say, has Synthegix worked? Has it been helpful? Have we talked to teachers? Do they feel more safe? Do they feel a little bit more in control with this tool? So I'm just wondering, before we cut that, did we... Oh, it's not cut?
No, ma'am. So shout out to Dr. Singleton. He was able to negotiate that cost to be cut in half for next year. So we're keeping it in place.
Okay.
The cost savings.
Because the contract was 208-plus thousand.
Okay, the way it looks like on here, like it's going away.
That's the amount we saved from the contract being cut in half for next year.
So is there anything on here that is still staying? And we just, it's a savings versus it's actually cut?
Airmark.
Airmark. It's been a negotiated cost and that too. So it's... And then the summer school is just the money in the budget going back into the budget because we're not doing it the way we're doing it traditionally.
All right. Again, this isn't for Board action, just for letting us know additional savings. If you want to go to the next slide, this number will be changing. Go to the next one. This number will be changing. Uh, go to the next one. This is the number board that we talked about. So essentially, administration is letting us know that they have around 1.9 million dollars total to negotiate with the uh, FFNEA, which includes the benefits side. So it's not just a salary side. It's benefits and salaries. It's about the dollar amount maximum that they can afford. This 1.4 in the bottom is now going towards that assistant principal role. They still need to find the additional around 955,000 dollars in additional, actually now over a million because we cut the executive uh, of CNI. So they have over another million some dollars to find um, in the budget for those savings. But again, so there'll be the 3.8 million going in the fund balance, given that everything was true on the preliminary. The 1.9 million dollars is salary and benefits to be able to negotiate how that would look like with the FFNEA and during their negotiations. Administrators, we certainly appreciate your understanding and knowing that you will not get a raise this year and you're freezing. We know there's more workload coming on as well, but certainly um, we appreciate you doing that goodwill effort uh, throughout this process as well. If you want to talk about the long-term recommendations that you're gonna be looking at.
Can I ask a question about this? I just wanted to ask, the 2% increase or if that's, if that's the route, whatever the raise amount is that's agreed to, is this for all staff that are not administrators? In other words, certified and non-certified?
Yes, uh, that, that number includes.
The microphone.
Yes, that number includes all staff except administration. So no central office, no principals, nobody with administrative title, all other staff categories.
Thank you.
So Ja- just looking um, forward-thinking, uh, again, we kind of already talked about trying to establish an early childhood center. Just strictly for pre-K babies. So that would allow us to have some savings cost because we don't currently provide transition for them. Uh, just being uh, more hands-on with the long-term financial strategies for the district. Again, looking to surplus buildings, uh, consolidating unutilized facilities to maximize efficiency. And based off feedback um, and, and information, we need to strongly look at restructuring our campuses back to K5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. Um, we've done some preliminary, look at buildings. So it's gonna be a lot of work uh, in phase three, but that'll some of the things we're looking forward to working on for you all.
Thank you so much again. We appreciate all of your energy. Again, Dr. Haywood, who did a lot of the conversations, certainly appreciate these challenging conversations. We hope you all get a day of rest here at some point. Um, certainly, can't close the whole district down, but certainly uh, the team, we appreciate everyone uh, in these decisions as well. Next up is consent. I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion because we have to pull some things off just so we're clear because some of those people were on there and so. Uh, motion to approve consent with the removal of the eight orchestra teachers, eighteen assistant principals, and the one executive director of curriculum instruction. There are motion to approve with that motion. Moved by Tyson, second by Thurman. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Abstentions, nays, ayes have it. Policy, there's one policy up for final, and this is student support services, which you would think is like student services, but it's all about like asbestos and hazardous waste and Terry signed up for it thinking it was gonna be about like support services and he quickly found out it was about asbestos. Uh, so is there a motion to approve Section E to go into effect on July 1st, 2025? Moved by Tyson, I mean, moved by Thurman.
Second.
Second by Dunn. Any questions? All those in, uh, all those in fa- you have a question? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Abstentions, nays, ayes have it. Next up is superintendent search. Uh, the Board of Education certainly appreciates the community's feedback and all stakeholders, and we would like to announce uh, that effective now, we are starting our search for our next superintendent. Tomorrow, you will receive a survey uh, that has, is outlining stakeholder feedback from all stakeholders that we're seeking your feedback. That should be invaluable for us to engage as we identify who the next superintendent could be. With that, we also invite anyone, including our stakeholders, to an in-person meeting here at 5:00 PM on next Wednesday, uh, April 2nd, to engage in an informal, in-person uh, conversation with the board to just talk about what's going well at the district, what's not going well, what do you like to see in our next superintendent and qualities? We are all, we are also going to be opening up a part of the search process to a select group of individuals. Uh, and you can note that if you're interested on that, uh, on the survey, where there'll be a confidentiality agreement, FFNEA will get to appoint some people to that committee as well, as well as teachers, support staff, students, as well as parents and community members. There'll be a small group who will be part of the interview process at some point along the way. Our goal, of course, is to be able to find the right person. The board is committed to finding the right superintendent and we will not settle unless we find the right one. And so uh, we, I've talked through, that's why we were late earlier, of just discussing what that will look like. And so I will say again, the board is committed to finding the right fit for the superintendent. Uh, and we will continue searching until we find the right one. We will not hire one until we find one that we feel is right for the district and the feedback that you all are providing. So please, uh, the email will come out at 10:00 AM tomorrow. Uh, thank you, Ms. Holloman, for already getting that. And so uh, it'll be a survey. The board's the only one who sees the survey, just let you know. There's no email collection on it. The only time your email will be collected is if you're interested in serving on that potential panel. So there'll be a small group of people who'll be selected for that panel, randomly selected uh, for that at a later date uh, to be determined once we get through the process. Again, our goal is to have someone in place by the start of the school year, but we are committed to finding the right person, not rushing through this process and making sure the community has clear feedback. So again, we welcome you to come next Wednesday at 5:00 PM here in the administration building, 8855 Dunn Road, if you'd like to partake in direct conversations with the Board of Education. That's who will be there. Uh, as well as we'll work with some administrators to take some notes for us as well as we have the conversation, processing strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and what you're looking for in the superintendent, but we really do value your feedback and input for that. So thank you for that and be on the lookout. We'll keep you updated as time progresses. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, Mr. President.
Oh, yes.
I just have one comment. I just want to thank the public, the community, the stakeholders for coming out and advocating. Um, tonight was, you know, seriously, I want to thank you all. As one of seven, uh, your input is, is appreciated. Um, our emails are open. Uh, we also take input that way. So thank you all for coming out tonight and advocating.
So move?
Moved by Powell Walker.
Second.
Second by Tyson. Roll call, please. Are we, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Abstentions, nays, ayes have it.